All right, I'm gonna call this October 6th meeting of the Mount Airy Town Council to order. We'll start with the pledge.
A pledge that leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. I see the mayor apparently is under the weather tonight and will not be here. We have no presentations, and I don't see our guest speaker. First up then is approval of the council meeting minutes. Before I move all of these in at once, did anybody have any changes in any of them other than we did make one, I think, to the closed minutes already that was then resent around? So unless somebody's got a change, I will move, we accept all four sets of minutes.
And I'll second with one little change here.
Okay.
My minutes say budget public hearing and it should be assigned or then closed.
I changed that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're good.
So that's already been done?
Copy.
Not seeing anybody looking to discuss this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If it's unanimous. Police report. Welcome.
Well, good evening. I'm Corporal Noyes, I'm the Maryland State Police Liaison.
Welcome Corporal. I don't think we've--
I've been here one other meeting.
Okay, okay.
I apologize for not being there a little more often. I've had some of the resident troopers here.
Well, I think Trooper Thompson's been here the last couple of times and she's done a fine job.
And I've been, they've done a good job of filling in. And I just wanted to pass this message around pretty simply. I prepared a report today, for this evening, this evening's meeting, and I just wanted to, instead of just going over some raw numbers and then we all read the report, I just wanna emphasize a few points. That we've tried to increase our visibility into business checks over the last couple of months. I've looked at the July and August statistics, and in September, we've had a, from August to September, we had almost ninety more business checks than normal. Patrol checks, which are your general patrol checks of neighborhoods, we got an increase of about twenty-five. And school checks, we went from thirty-eight to sixty-three. Total calls for service in town went from three ninety-nine to six ninety-nine. And what we're trying to show there is, we're trying to increase our visibility to give that police service that the town expects us to do. Going down to collisions investigated, we have a few more, just a couple more accidents than normal. Of course, collisions charged, that means someone received a ticket for that collision. And Code eighty-nine, that means, well, we had twelve this past month in September. That means it's just an exchange of information. The police were present, and we just make sure that the information was valid for both parties involved. We also, in the other activities, we've had a little increase in controlled dangerous substance arrests from two to four, and non-controlled dangerous substance arrests from four up to six. I believe our increased patrol activity has helped us with these numbers, and we want to stay visible and take care of any trouble spots. We've had some hot spots, and we had a road invasion back earlier this month. We're increasing patrols in that area, in Four Hood Street, near the thrift shop area.
Yes, actually, we've just gotten a packet on that. Had a lot of complaints about some serious issues in that location.
Yes, I've been ready to compose an email to all the troopers and also CC the mayor's office as far as some of the more, some more actions that we're gonna take to try to put that to rest so that there's no more disturbances in that area. It seems like Walmart sometimes tends to be a little bit of a frequent visitor, frequent visitors at the Walmart. You get a lot of shoplifting complaints there. But we tend to more than likely have at least an arrest. Sometimes it's a release home citation. If it's under a hundred dollars, a release home citation. If it's over a hundred dollars, by law, we have to arrest. Under a hundred, it's an optional thing. So we're trying to, hopefully, with the holidays coming up, maybe a little bit more visibility there, and sometimes even higher off-duty security during the holidays, so maybe that'll stem the tide of thefts in that area. And that pretty much sums up. If you have any questions for me or anything I can help with.
Chris?
Corporal, so the council has copies of citizens' complaints about particular activities in Hood Street. These are Carroll County complaints. You get copies of these?
You mean all of them?
Yeah, I mean, do you get copies of the complaints? They're Carroll, so they're Carroll--
They're from the sheriff.
That's the sheriff's department.
They're from the sheriff.
I don't see those.
Well, actually, what happened is the citizens in the neighborhood, I guess, must have gotten these from the Carroll County Sheriff's Department, and they came around handing them all, because they came into my office--
Or they folded them to you.
Because I own a building right near where these problems have been happening. While I've not observed the problems, because I'm not there in the evening, you know, I'm in my office at the building there nine to five, you know, I have heard from all the businesses and the people who live around that there have been some issues. And I guess Chris has given you his copy, so--
Right, and as I look through--
Do you want me to have these or do you want me to make copies?
Yes, absolutely. You can at least take this.
Yeah.
When I look through, there's just a question from a law enforcement perspective. When I look through this, there are a number of citizens writing complaints about drug dealing and things like that. Is that sufficient for you to serve a warrant against the house? I mean, clearly, we've got a serious problem.
What I will do is, I will sit down with our detective sergeant, Detective Sergeant Lacy, Lieutenant, and we'll come on the course of action. Because I think it's actionable, but it's not, you know, to put a warrant together, you have to kinda look at the circumstances. I think, you know, once I look through here, they may wanna interview the citizen a little bit further to see what kind of actionable, you know, what kind of action we can take with that.
But I think tonight, the takeaway from this is to assure the citizens that this complaint is now on file with our state troopers--
Yes.
And that our state troopers are gonna investigate this and shut this down.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And I have seen, for some reason, I just noticed a lot more patrols in my neighborhood, too. Pretty interesting.
I try to keep a line of communication with the troopers that are assigned to this location, and I stress to them that, you know, if it's not documented, it didn't happen.
Right.
And I'm glad that you're seeing them also.
Right.
That's documentation, too. Citizens are seeing them as well, so I'm glad to get to hear that. But, you know, it's good news, bad news, let me know, and we'll make sure we take care of it.
Any other questions?
Appreciate it.
Corporal Noyes, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Next up, Manner Volunteer Fire Company. I'm just finishing these two. Mr. Wellman, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you all?
All right.
All right, for the month of September, there was a total of one hundred and seventy-two calls, one hundred and two in Carroll, fifty-seven in Frederick, eleven in Howard, and two in McGarver. That's all I had for this month.
Okay.
Short sleep.
Very short. Sounds good. All right, we have a special guest tonight. Delegate Kelly Schultz is here.
Who was a little late, and I apologize. It was that wonderful Metropolis we like to call Annapolis that had me tied up. So I apologize for being a few minutes late, and thank you everybody for coming out and being so active in the town and what you all are doing. I have nothing on my agenda. This is my annual trip out to the municipalities, just to hear from you. I know that we catch up at MML meetings, and it was nice to see some of you at this past meeting down in Annapolis last month. And basically, to thank you for what you do amongst your three shared counties and what is going to be what seems to be a very new delegation, state representatives that are gonna be representing the town of Mount Airy as a whole, between Frederick and Carroll and parts of Howard County coming in the near future. So as per normal, I wanted to stop in and talk with you to see what you had on your agenda, if there was something. Obviously, one of my big advocacy programs, along with Frederick County government, has been the creation of parent drug awareness, drug awareness programs, and the participation of the municipalities. I've been very thankful for the municipalities' participation and how they've been able to help get that word out and help to prevent some of the overdose deaths and some of the other issues that have been happening in this region specifically. So any part that Mount Airy has in that, in order to be able to help us to alleviate and get that message out to parents about what the actual issue is and what the involvement is, is of course greatly, greatly appreciated. Another issue that I have of importance is something that I think we all should be working on together. No matter what happens in November, we need to really push forward the highway user revenue funds to come to the percentage that we all expect them to be prior to six years ago even. There's no excuse for where we are. There's a step moving forward where we can put, as citizens, all of us, can vote for the highway, the transportation lockbox, for the Transportation Trust Fund. That's gonna be on everybody's ballots on November 4th. So I'm trying to educate people about what that actually is. And I know for certain that each of you is very familiar with that, because it's something that we've been fighting for in Annapolis for a long time. It's not a one-hundred percent fix, unfortunately. There are ways in which the governor and the legislature can still, what they like to term as borrow the funds from the Transportation Trust Fund. We all call it something a little bit different. But there still will be the opportunity for them to do that under emergency circumstances. In the legislature, we tried to get them to define emergency situations where they could transfer that money into the general fund, but that's not defined. So for your voters here in Mount Airy, I want them to know that this is not a, it's not a one-hundred percent fix, but it's not something that they should feel uncertain of. It's sort of a halfway there, and we can at least start with this. It will be a constitutional amendment for the state of Maryland if they vote for this on their ballot. It will still require a three-fifths majority of legislators in order to allow the governor to move those funding from the Transportation Trust Fund to the general fund. So as we know, the majority party has had those numbers in the past. So we wanna make sure that we put some sort of extra protection on the funds that each of us pay into our gas tax, because we all know that the gas tax is what is the main revenue source for the Transportation Trust Fund. That Transportation Trust Fund, which is why we're even talking about it, is the source of the highway user revenue funds. And people say, will there be more money for transportation projects and infrastructure projects should we protect the funds that are there? And of course, it'll create the opportunity for more projects to be there. We just have to make sure that we put that as a priority, going back to the municipalities and the counties, in order for them to care for their share of the roads that their motoring public puts into the fund as well. So that's, I know it's a top priority of MML. I've worked with your leadership across the state in regards to working on that, and have been pretty outspoken about the matter, even though last year, MML came out and thanked the administration for the funds that they did receive because they were higher than the last couple of years. But I think we can do better than that, quite frankly. And we should do better than that, because that's what has been owed to our local municipal governments for a very long time. So that'll be on my agenda. I know that some of the other candidates have their, on their agenda as well, and it will just remain seen as to what happens in November. Obviously, everything is political at this point in time, but we try to make it a little bit reasonable as well as political at the same time. But I also, when I come out here to speak with all the municipalities, thirteen now, District Four, so keeps us running a little bit, I also wanna open up the opportunity to have a discussion with all of you, which will hopefully be a more extended conversation as we go into the next four years. Some of the other municipalities know that once representing them, they might be expected to get phone calls while I'm sitting in a committee meeting and ask them exactly what this bill means to them, because I can't always trust that what's good for the rest of the state, as far as municipalities go, is good for any single municipality. So I would hope that you would be open to that as well. But in coming here today, if there's something specific that's on your agenda that you would like me to address or to perhaps clarify, I'm more than happy to do so. Yes, sir?
And I do have something. So as you just heard, the chief gave the fire report.
Yes, sir.
One hundred and seventy-two calls total. Hundred and twelve in Carroll, fifty-seven in Frederick.
Yep.
So nominally, half the calls, or if I do the stats right--
One-third.
One-third of the calls. Okay, thanks. Go to Frederick.
Okay.
It's a continuing inter-jurisdictional problem that we have in Mount Airy. Half the town in Frederick, half the town in Carroll. And we've talked somewhat to the Frederick County Commissioner's representative, and really haven't gotten anywhere on this issue. The issue is as follows. By tradition, the town of Mount Airy gives ten percent of its property taxes to the fire company to support the operating budget. On the Carroll side, a portion of the property taxes on the Carroll side, going to Carroll County, they turn around and come back to, again, support the fire company. So just so you know, last year, three hundred and eight thousand dollars came back from Carroll County to help support our fire department. The town gave the fire department a hundred and sixty, again, from town funds only. Frederick, nothing. Frederick really doesn't give us any. And last year, the fire department, and again, I'm just quoting numbers from the meeting, was about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars short in operating expenses. So we brought the issue up a couple times, and Frederick, to me, seems, the Frederick County government seems to be, well, pushed back. They don't wanna do anything. Why not? They collect the tax revenue, don't necessarily send some of it back to the fire department. So it's an inter-jurisdictional problem that we have, being in town between two counties. If you could look in at, help us try to figure out how to solve the issue, to get perhaps some revenue out of Frederick going to the fire department to support the region, that would be most appreciated.
Well, I appreciate that, and I would assume that might be a topic more suitable for a county representative.
I saw Frederick County ducking back there.
And I'm not ducking the issue at all. But I wanna let you know, I don't know why the county does that, but if you're asking me to make sure that I keep my ears open and to be able to acknowledge and bring together a group of people where we're able to have a conversation and get you an answer, because what I hear you're saying is that you don't understand the reasons why Frederick County has not contributed back that portion to the fire company. If that's something that you would like to understand, then I am more than willing to help you get a resolution to that understanding, whether it's an agreeable resolution or not, at least to understand why they're doing it.
Yeah, actually, we'd like to get something in writing from Frederick County, saying, here's something in writing instead of continuing discussions which go nowhere.
Well, I'm happy to help, to facilitate that.
Thank you.
I personally am a member of Walkersville Fire Company, so the fire companies in and of themselves are extremely important in this community, especially, in my opinion, no offense to career firefighters, but the volunteers are crucial to what we do in both counties, just because of the history and the creation of community that they're able to bring and the cost savings that they've brought in. I know that with the restructuring in Frederick County of the fire service, it has become a question as to what's happening with that, and I've heard a lot of conversation about where they're going to go in the future. And of course, until after November, we really don't know the ultimate path and what's going to happen in that leadership. But I'm happy to help you, because that's crucial to the safety of our shared constituents, by the way.
Thank you.
I have one. Something we're gonna be discussing later on is the state ethics requirement.
Yeah, sticky issue, huh?
There's five municipalities in two counties that have not signed on, and we're one of the five. Jim Peck tells me, and we hear rumors that this is gonna be a legislative priority.
By whom?
MML is, I guess, is going to push you guys to try to do something about that. Is there--
I haven't heard from MML on that. They haven't spoken to me specifically about it. I know that there's been a great deal of concerns in the past as to--
Reporting mostly, is what I think what people are having trouble with.
Well, and I think they have trouble at the county levels and all levels of local government. So I think it may actually be a Mako issue and an MML issue. I think that there are people that are very concerned about the autonomy of their local officials as opposed to state officials, and what happens in between the two and how it can be different. Now, as far as what it's going to look like, as far as the organization and what they're going to push and the restraints that they're actually looking for, or the alleviations, I have not seen any proposal of that at this point in time.
Thank you.
I've got a question for you.
Yes.
I've been reading a paper where I think it's gonna be a shortfall in the income coming in the state of Maryland. Is that correct, or?
Yes.
Like for you, is there-- All right, my next question is, are we looking at another tax?
Well, God, I hope not. There has been some conversation that, I think it came from Peter Francho from the Comptroller's Office, saying that to alleviate the shortcomings, which I think was over six hundred million dollars at last count, so we overestimated the revenues that we were bringing in from our own tax base. And I'm not going to opine on this, except to say, when you oppose a budget that's over a billion dollars more than a budget previously spent, you don't have a growth in either your business or your personal individual levels of income. It would seem obvious to some that the increase would not be legitimate, because you will not be pulling in the extra revenues in order to pay for said expenses. So whomever is in the governor's mansion in, after November, will have to take serious consideration into what we have a spending problem in the state of Maryland. And if you are finding that you have extra revenues, let's just say, from gambling revenues that are coming in to help to fund the education system in the state, there's absolutely no reason why you should use those existing revenues to build another program or to spend it on something new, which is exactly what we've been doing in Maryland. We have been ignoring the problem that the forecast of revenues in the state are not increasing because of what has occurred at the state level and the policies that we, I guess ultimately, as a group, have put into place, some of us have fought very hard against. I don't believe, sir, that there is the level of interest in the legislature to raise any taxes come this first year. I truly believe there's, well, first of all, there's gonna be at least a thirty percent turnover in the House of current legislators. So those current legislators are not going to, in their first year, going to walk in the door and say, okay, I'm gonna increase taxes on some level. I just don't think it's gonna happen. I think what needs to happen is there needs to be, for the first time possibly ever in the last two decades, an opportunity to look at the budget, look to see what we're spending on, and looking to see how we can cut that back to reduce some of the debt that's being placed on each and every one of us. I mean, each and every one of us as legislators, I mean, it will hurt municipal governments, it will hurt county governments, but it's hurting these people even more than it's hurting us. We have the juggling act that we have to do, because we have to decide how to make up for the deficiencies. But if it's put on the backs of the public, then we're really at fault. And if there is a proposal of a tax, I think that there may be a mutiny on the Hill, should we go down to Annapolis and somebody oppose a raise in that, because there has been a very strong, solid effort and a focused plan on how we did not have to increase the spending in order to be able to put forth our priorities and what we as a state had our priorities in. So I hope not.
I think you were here last time I asked that question, and I was sitting back there. And next time, you know, we got a rain tax fee, so I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, well, and what the state will say, and so many people have heard me go off on this issue way too many times, so I'm not gonna bore you on this at all. The rain tax is the biggest fiasco, and what the state will say is that they didn't raise a tax. They placed burdens on the counties in order to figure out how to pay an increasing share of a problem that probably isn't theirs, knowing that publicly, that the only way in which they could make up for that loss and their deficiencies and how to do the retrofitting was to put additional property tax on. So that was tricky of the state, wasn't it?
I thought it was.
But I think also that that's an issue that will be brought back up. I think that once we get to Annapolis, there has been some clear-cut statistics and data and shared knowledge about the topic of, you know, where the blame is placed. And to look at ten jurisdictions uniquely across the state, saying that they are equally to blame for a problem that's coming mostly from the north, is a, it's a very heavy burden to place, especially on the rural districts where we are in Frederick and Carroll County.
Should've been a federal project, I thought. I thought it'd be a federal project, not a state. Should've been a federal.
Well, it is, it's an EPA project, and the EPA has passed it down to all of us. So that's, they have mandated the states. The unfortunate part for Maryland is that Maryland is the only state that was deemed responsible by the EPA that actually took charge of it. And not only did we take charge of it, but we, as a state, attempted to go above and beyond what the federal government had mandated for our state, picking up the slack for the states from the north that are actually pulling the pollution down into our Chesapeake Bay, which sits here. But the areas to the north have the biggest, I mean, we all know geography and topography. I mean, water flows downhill. So--
It all flows down.
But they have been able to put that off as part of their responsibility, and nobody's saying that we don't have a responsibility to be acknowledging what possibly needs to be done environmentally with the Chesapeake Bay. We always want that to be one of our priorities. But when we take on extra responsibilities without looking at the actual data and put that burden on the taxpayers, in ten jurisdictions, no less, it was a heavy burden for all of us. So the state would say that they have not added a tax.
I thought it was a tax fee.
They added a mandate to ten jurisdictions trying to raise their taxes, so that's, it puts it on the counties to force them to raise taxes. However, if you live in Frederick County and not in Carroll County, you'll know that your taxes only went up one penny per parcel. That was a tricky one.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Well, thank you.
We always appreciate it when, you know, when our legislators drop in.
And again, I apologize for being a few minutes late. I appreciate the good work that all of you do and hope to be back again.
Thanks.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to community concern, citizen comments. We reserve fifteen minutes for this. First thing I'd like to know is how many people we have who intend to talk during this? Two, three, four. Six. Two, three, four.
Two minutes each.
Okay, everybody gets, all right, I'm gonna hold you to just that group. Everybody gets two minutes, and I'm gonna let Judge O'Connor speak first, just because I always let judges go first. They use the gavel on me all the time, so this is my big chance. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. President and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you this evening. As you may know, my name is Danny O'Connor. I currently serve as a judge on the Circuit Court for Frederick County. I am gonna be running for election this fall, and I'm here tonight to introduce myself to you and to share some information that I hope will be of interest to you and your constituents concerning the upcoming judicial election. This election is gonna be an important election for the voters of Frederick County, because they will be electing the individual who will serve as their judge for the next fifteen years. It's a fifteen-year term, and in that sense, it's a very important decision for the voters to make. The other thing I would share with you is that unlike most elections, judicial elections are nonpartisan. That is to say that we do not run as candidates based on our political affiliation, but we run based on our qualifications to be judge. And I would share with you that before I became a judge, I practiced as a trial lawyer for thirty-two years in the circuit courts here in Frederick County and Carroll County and throughout the state. I actually had the honor of having several cases with your esteemed counsel, Mr. McCarron.
I was on the receiving end of--
I really enjoyed that experience. And I just wanted to share a couple of more thoughts with you about the process that we go through to become judges. Last summer, there was an opening created by the legislature for a new circuit court position, and I applied along with seven other lawyers for that position. We went through an extensive four-month process to be vetted for that position. And we completed a very detailed application. We were interviewed by numerous bar associations. There was a confidential survey prepared by the Frederick County Bar Association, the lawyers who had dealt with us most closely, who shared their comments. And all of that information was provided to a-- who shared their comments. And all of that information was provided to a judicial nominating commission, which consisted of individuals, lawyers and non-lawyers, community leaders from Frederick County, who went through an extensive vetting process. And they are the ones who decided of the applicants who were the most qualified to be judges. And I was honored to be selected as part of the group of five individuals that were found qualified and whose name was submitted to the governor. So, I don't want to take up too much more of your time. I do appreciate your attention and be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I want to be respectful of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I can't ask any questions about you.
I'm going to start on this side of the room and go this way. So, I think, Rick, that probably gets you. Are you the closest? Is that the first one?
I think it does.
Okay, you'll be next. We'll move across. You've got two minutes. And, you know, we're going to try and stick to that.
I'll try to, because I have a prepared statement.
Okay.
Rick Lashford out of Nottingham. In the past couple of months, much has been said, at least by two people, about rezoning two properties at the twin arch park and Route 27 intersection. I understand that a petition containing just over 450 signatures has been obtained and presented, I guess. Those signatures represent about 7% of the town's registered voters, which I confirmed this afternoon. Based on recent discussions on another subject, I believe that most of you will recognize that generally to be accepted petitions, people are looking for 20%, 30% in some cases. 7% is not a really meaningful figure. The opponents of the rezoning seem to think that the carnival grounds will go away if rezoned. The fire company's done its best to label that as an opinion, or that opinion is false. I would miss the carnival grounds if they disappear as part of the Mount area, move to and come to life. Look. Some people, however, seem to miss the fact that the rezoning to commercial is not the demise of the carnival grounds necessarily. Some people think it's a scare tactic being used. The objectors have no facts to substantiate this fear. There's another property on the southwest corner of Park at 27. It seems to have garnered some attention with a rezoning request. The same individuals seem to have a problem with the request of Dr. and Mrs. O'Brien. I have information that the O'Briens' next-door neighbor has no problem with their rezoning request. Now, who has the greater right to object? The next-door neighbor or somebody who lives across the street and down four or five houses? The objectors have claimed that special circumstances were attached to the O'Briens' original rezoning request. These, however, don't seem to be able to be refound. I have seen a memo that's signed by, quote, "former planning and zoning appeals chairman," unquote, attempting to substantiate the claims of the objectors. It begins, quote, "if my memory is correct," unquote. That leaves a lot of question in my mind. It goes on to offer opinions but no facts. I would have to say that this memo has no legal standing to block any zoning requests. Lastly, I would ask you, those people who will be making the decision, to look at the four-corner intersection and ask yourself, which corner's different? One corner has a shopping center. Another one has an erroneously zoned carnival ground, and the other has a post office. The fourth corner is a residence. Which one's different? Why should it not be commercial? I don't understand that. Who will say that having all four corners zoned as commercial is the wrong thing to do? Again, look at all four corners. Which one is different? And the closest neighbor has no problem with the request. Finally, recalcitrant neighbors can all too frequently cause unnecessary problems for others. I think it needs a closer look. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. And I think we had, was it both of you or just one of you?
I'm Caroline Rickerson, and the property is on my street, back up to the commercial property on Park Avenue that is being discussed, the veterinarians' property. When a property is rezoned commercial, it changes. And when it changes, it changes the whole character of that neighborhood. You have behind that property 100 and some, maybe 160-some homes of retired people who have looked forward to a quiet, peaceful area where they could enjoy their older years. I feel I'm speaking for many of my neighbors who are over 90 and cannot come out at night to speak, when I say that we are extremely grateful to the Planning and Zoning Committee for deliberating fairly and wisely to deny commercial development to the veterinarians' property. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we had, right there?
Hi, my name's Colin Poe. I live on Marygold Road Way. And as we all know, the intersection of Park Avenue and 27 is very dangerous, the most dangerous intersection in Mount area. And if you don't want it to go worse, just don't vote no to a O'Brien property to go commercial, because it will get worse, and you know it will, if it goes commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's move it on across. Who is, Dave, you want to go? I mean, really? Okay. Frederick County's up next. And Chris, you'll be, Chris, you're going to be next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dave Dunn, the Frederick County Board of Commissioners liaison. Glad to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you. Just wanted to say one thing on the topic of the volunteer fire department. I just want to remind the viewing audience and the commissioners that Frederick County does provide somewhere around $30,000 a year for physicals. That money's not given to the fire department. However, we pay for their physicals. The dilemma is always for the board is that the fire department is a Carroll County fire department. It is a Carroll County fire department. It's running mutual aid into Frederick County. We have lots of situations like that. So, the dilemma becomes, if you're going to start down that slippery slope, you have Blue Ridge, and you have all these other places, even Loudoun County running mutual aid into the Brunswick area quite a bit. So, when you start down this slope of providing some other kind of a stipend or an allotment based on maybe the percentage or the amount of calls that you run mutual aid into Frederick County, then it really gets you into kind of an area that you don't want to be. Because as soon as we do that, there's going to be a whole bunch of them standing in line who will want the same treatment. So, that is the dilemma. Now, Commissioner Young and myself came out, I don't know, time flies, 18 months ago when this issue first came up, we met with the chief and met with the mayor down in the basement. And we went over all of the benefits that they get from Frederick County now. I think ambulance billing. And I think the mayor, my recall is that he was pretty surprised that, you know, he had the idea like most people do, that Frederick County is doing nothing for the Mount area fire department, which is just not true. So, that is the dilemma. And I know some of you don't necessarily agree with that.
Dave, if I could...
President Scott.
So, thanks for correcting the fact that, you know, some, about $30,000 in kind. You guys don't tax Brunswick, do you? When you do mutual aid, when you run into another area for mutual aid, do you tax them?
We don't.
Brunswick's in Frederick County. Loudoun County crosses in and services Brunswick, but they don't pay Loudoun County.
Right, so let me, sorry, let me rephrase. For the areas that you do mutual aid into, on a cooperative basis, when you go outside of the county, you don't tax those, you don't collect tax revenues?
We don't get any money for that. Actually, going into Pennsylvania, too.
In the case here, you collect a substantial amount of tax revenue from the Mount area citizens who are in Frederick County, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And I would think that, given the value of the homes on the Frederick side of Mount area, there's a substantial amount of tax revenue, property tax revenue derived from the citizens who live in Mount area. And you tax as part of Frederick property taxes, right? Not the same here.
Well, and that's exactly...
So, there's no, to me, this, sorry, I'll just conclude that. To me, there's no dilemma.
Well, the difference is, though, when you're comparing this situation to us going into Loudoun County or Loudoun County coming into Frederick County, there's no exchange of money. There are no services provided to Loudoun County for coming into Frederick and for Brunswick to go into Loudoun County. However, in this case, there are benefits provided to the Carroll County Fire Department to the tune of about $30,000. Nobody else is getting that for running mutual aid.
Wait, I'm sorry, but again, the important point here is that Frederick County commissioners are collecting substantial amount of property tax revenue from owners who live in Mount area, but they live in Frederick County.
And that's the justification.
And that's a unique, and that's a unique circumstance in your county.
Well, and that's exactly the justification they use for providing the $30,000 a year.
$30,000 is not a lot of money. It's not enough.
But, Chris, I don't think it's a unique situation. I mean, because there's actually quite a few places in Frederick County, my understanding is where a Frederick County fire company is the first responder for places in Pennsylvania and other counties.
That's correct.
And with Frederick County in that case pays, for example, they run into Washington County. They've got a lot of places on the Washington County border. Washington County collects tax dollars over there, but they don't fund Frederick County fire stations. The standard has typically always been, whether you like it or not, is everybody just kind of pays for what's in their county, and you don't worry about whether they run across the lines. That's been...
Right. At some point, just, and I'll conclude, at some point, is the fire company, if the fire company's budget, operating budget continues to go further and further in the red, that money's got to come from somewhere. It's, which means where it comes from where. If Frederick's not going to contribute more, Carroll's not going to contribute more, then it comes from the town citizens. I mean, the numbers don't lie. Well, delicate chances to say. The numbers don't lie.
Correct. It would come from the town citizens. Scott's next.
The only question I had, you said $30,000, then you said Carroll County Fire Departments? Is that $30,000 spread across multiple fire departments, or is that $30,000 just for Mount area?
Just for Mount area.
Okay.
And I'm using that as, it's between $25,000 and $35,000 that is, is the cost for providing the physicals to the fire department. I can get the exact...
It's fine. I just wanted to clarify because a couple times I've heard...
It depends upon how many guys...
No, it's just for them.
Carroll County Fire Departments.
No, no, it's just for them.
It depends upon how many of those guys used the service that year.
Sure, sure.
Bob?
Statement of fact here, 40% of that $160,000 of the town in Mount area gives to the fire company up here, comes out of our pockets, the Frederick County citizens. Okay? We make up 40% of the population of the town in Mount area, and we have the same tax rate in town. So, 40% is from Carroll County citizens. Number two, we got the tax equity program in Frederick County. Is any of that involved with fire service? I know it's parks and...
No.
There's a very...
There's four categories. It's been like that. I think this calculation and formula has been in place for about three decades.
And that brought...
Police.
That brought the town in Mount area $485,000 or $458,000?
That's the, yeah.
$458,000 last year. That's the check we got back from Frederick County for services that are provided in Frederick County.
Duplicate services.
That we provide here.
Right.
Plowing, police.
Yes, it's police, parks, planning, and one more. I forget what it is, off the top of my head. But there's four categories. And as I say, that formula and calculation has been in place for three or four decades.
Do we know what you got from Carroll? We got 308 alone for fire protection.
I don't know. Do we get any money back in the tax equity? It's my understanding that Frederick County is the only county in the state of Maryland that has a tax equity program.
Yeah, and on the Carroll side, we have the town-county agreement, ensuring we'll be able to know the numbers better. I do on that, but we have a lot of...
There is nothing Dave can do about this.
Right.
He has stood up for quite a few years now and absorbed these darts, at least as well as I can.
Yeah, somebody come with me to do it next time, right?
I just, I get upset at the fact that everybody thinks that Frederick County does not provide anything towards the fire service we receive here in the town of Mount area, and we do.
No, that's a, tax equity is for duplicate services provided by the town that Frederick would otherwise have to provide. That's what the tax set-off is what it's called, whether it's differential or equity. So...
Yeah, I think we have a choice between the two, and we take equity, as I recall.
You do.
I always get the, remember, forget what it is, we take equity.
I tell you, we have Myersville and Frederick City that went to differential, and they'll never go back. They love it, the citizens love it. And so, two of the 12...
The reason it can't work for us is it would require us to have a different tax rate on each side of town.
Right.
So, it just, yeah, it just doesn't work for us. So, we appreciated them giving us both options. Dave, thanks.
Thank you.
I think, Chris, I think you were next, and moving this way.
All right.
So, Chris, I'm going to hold you two minutes unless one of these guys asks you a question. When you get asked a question, then it's fair game to go over.
I have to commend you on keeping people to a time schedule. Chris Moore, Mount area, North Main Street. I missed the hearing on the master plan. I did submit comments. But so I just wanted to say a few kind of big picture things on that. Lots of great things about Mount area. It's a good place to be proud of, a good place to be part of the town. The master plan emphasizes that, seems to focus on commercial development for the future. I like that. The master plan emphasizes living within the means. Very important. We got to do that stuff. But I guess one thing that I'm very, almost disturbed when I read the master plan and a lot of the discussions that we have are that it fails to recognize that a lot of us are growth. So, we've got, let's just say in matter, we've got some portion of us, maybe a third, people that grew up here, that your parents grew up here, whatever. The other, probably two-thirds, at least a half, probably two-thirds of us are people that moved here in the last two or three decades, right? So, we're kind of, and a lot of us didn't move here just for a job or because we could get a cheap house. Some of us did. A lot of us moved here to escape. But we don't escape. We actually get in a car, and then we drive back to Gaithersburg, Germantown, Baltimore, Washington DC, et cetera. So, a lot of us are growth here. So, when I read this master plan, and I'm reading all this, we've got to acknowledge that, man, people like me, I'm out there clogging up the roads every morning. And let's make a composite character of all of us that moved here in the last two or three decades. I mean, a lot of us, we paid for the development of farmland at Summit Ridge, Nottingham, et cetera. We moved here to escape. We made the town bigger than it would be otherwise. If it wasn't for all us escapees here, this town would be a half, a third the size of this. There's not the economy to support us, right? So, we are a town of growth. We are the very people, so many of us, the majority of us now, are the people that make it as big as it is. So, the idea, I think a lot of it, we failed, we've got to acknowledge that about ourselves. We're not, we're not a bunch of farmers out here anymore. Service, some of those left, but most of us are escapees. We're people who caused the growth. We're part of the traffic. We're not somehow just victims of it. We are, we are the people that made it happen, okay? And I guess I want that to be recognized by so many of us, including me. And when we moved here, when we bought our new houses in Summit Ridge and Nottingham, when we chose to drive long distance to work, we increased the town population. We put a demand on water. We put a demand on sewer. People that were here before us set that up so we could live here. If it wasn't for people who were here for us, providing water, getting grants to pay for sewer, et cetera, we wouldn't be able to be here, all us escapees. So, I guess, when I read all this stuff about how I don't want people moving here, I feel that's a very awkward contradiction for people like me, who are the very people that drove the growth and are really growth. Anyway, we, and on the water and sewer stuff, I mean, you look around, you don't see rivers and lakes out here, right? Mother Nature didn't give us the big water supply. People decided they were going to work for it. They drilled wells all over the place. They gradually got enough to support as many of us as there are. The sewer plant, we got grants over the last several decades to expand it. So, basically, the only reason the Mount area is able to support as many of us as it does is because people put work into it. Now, I agree with the idea of living within our means, absolutely. But a lot of the folks, I think, want to prevent increasing those means, as the idea that we, we escaped here successfully. And I want to drive to Germantown, Gaithersburg, DC, Baltimore, but I don't want those people coming up here. To me, that's a pretty awkward foundation for a rationale on how to plan the future of a town. When we're the very thing that we're trying to stop ourselves, I just feel really awkward about that. And there's a lot of that out there these days. So, I guess what I'm asking for is, let's not deprive other people of the very thing we did ourselves. We're all us commuters and all us folks that paid for farmland development, et cetera. Yes, we want to have a sustainable town. We want to have smart water, smart sewer. We want to preserve rural land out there and all that stuff. But I guess what I'd like to say is, all of us that chose to live in the town, I'd say we did a good thing. We didn't go out and pay for, live way out in the county somewhere. We're in a place where we can have concentrated services. We're close to the bank, close to the food store, et cetera. That was a good thing that we chose to do that. Let's not work to deprive other people of that opportunity, okay? So, let's just recognize that we are a town of growth ourselves. We are growth ourselves, so many of us. And we've got to recognize that when we have this town plan. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
I think we had one or two people in the corner. Okay. You, and then I'll go over to, okay, and then Teresa, and then Doc, are you going to, okay. So, we got two more.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Hadad, and back to rezoning. I just overheard from the grapevine that the Planning and Zoning Committee is changing their mind about the three laws on Ridge Court from a limited...
There will be a public hearing on that issue before the next council meeting at 7:00. There'll be, just for those of you who don't know, and if, if, you know, if, if, if you were going to speak on that, that's fine, you can go ahead tonight. But just to let anybody know and the public know, that any changes that were made when the council sat down with the, with the planning commission, went over the master plan, there will be a public hearing on those changes at seven o'clock before the November council meeting, because that's the meeting at which we would actually vote up or down on the master plan.
Sounds good.
But if you're here already and you want to do it, go.
I'll be one and have it wait. No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. And we had one, oh, Teresa, there we go.
Okay, I'm sorry, Peter, because I was, did, um, did Dr.?
He said he didn't want to say it. It's Doc, I, 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 I asked Doc if he wanted to say anything. He did.
He said it's.
Teresa. And the Nats won four to one.
Hi, my name's Teresa Postrock, and I own Beautiful Faces Permanent Makeup here in town. I am here on a happy note. I'm not to complain about anything. I am here to let everybody know, once again, we are doing the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk on October nineteenth, and we're trying to get the whole town to show their support for the walk by painting the town pink. The mayor's going to be judging, him and I will go around, to see what, um, business and what resident shows the most support for the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. I have been walking the neighbor, um, the town all, all day. Um, everyone who is on part of the walk, the path of the walk, we put in their mailbox, and we've also been putting this in, um, trying to get businesses to show their support. Most importantly, I do want to thank, um, Century Ford and, um, the Athletic Club. Health Unlimited, I'm sorry, had a, for their support being flagship sponsor. Through their example of how the community needs to be involved with this, we now have five restaurants who are doing fundraisers. Um, tonight, Mount Airy Inn is doing one. Tootie Fruity, um, Mount Airy Tavern has already, um, sent us money for their support. California Tortilla, and Memories has been a huge support, um, for this, um, for the event. So October nineteenth, I hope to see all of your faces at the walk. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. I think, do we get everybody in our sweep? Okay. Uh, Charter Amendments, ordinance two thousand fourteen dash three. Assistant City Citizen Recall Provision, which we have been battling about for a few months. Scott?
I think there was only one change, and it was something, uh, Councilman Everidge had sent for an email, at least a portion of it, that I agreed to.
It was a, we're taking it on the only, wasn't it?
To strike out only. It doesn't make sense to have it in there.
Where is it?
Only one or more.
B, um, page two of six, B, recall may be initiated for one or more. The word only should be removed.
No, only.
The word only should be removed.
Right, I'm sorry. You said.
Okay.
Now I have two amendments I'd like to propose.
Well, it's page two of six, B. Uh, it says, recall may be initiated for, the word only should be removed. I, I had a question that I've, I guess I've raised before. I didn't really see whether it had been changed or not. In three of six, four A, it talks about notice being given to the petitioner. Have we sorted out who that is? Because the petition would be signed by twenty percent of the people, so that's giving notice to six hundred, uh, you know, how many?
Wouldn't be the one that submitted the petition.
Well, I'm not, I mean, typically, the petitioner, so, you know, I know like when we had dealt with the, uh, South of I-70, everybody who signed the petition was a petitioner.
Right.
Okay. And they all had to pony up the dollars to pay for it. And there's discussions in here about the petitioners paying for their legal fees. Um, and I just remember running into this as a mess back then. I mean, so if we were to assume that we have, you know, three thousand voters.
Can I ask it a different question first? I've got two amendments I want to propose.
If that's nine hundred people could be the petitioner.
They make, the two amendments may clarify that.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, in reviewing a lot of the council discussions we had on my first attempt, recall without cause, and talking to some citizens about that, it was clear I perhaps didn't communicate clearly. And a lot of the conversation, reviewing the tape on the council, was, well, you know, if you're going to have a petition for recall, i- it's got to have some reason behind it. There was also some discussions, I guess between Councilman King and I, where we disagreed about the nature of elected office.
And we still do.
And we still do. Where Councilman King felt that when we got elected, it was a contract, where I strongly feel when we get elected, we're at-wheel employees, subject to recall at any point by the citizens. So, that being said, here's my first amendment. What I'd like to do is amend this. Insert section one, a new section C. In other words, underneath grounds for recall. Right now, we have section B, grounds for recall. It lists the seven things.
Yes.
I want to insert a new section, and the reason why I want to insert the new section, and the language is very clear, is again, it gives the citizens the ability to recall an elected official for whatever reason they want. The reason why I feel so strongly about this is.
Hold up, guys, let him finish. I can see Bob shaking his head already.
The reason why I feel so strongly about this is, as an elected official, you shouldn't hold on and determine under what conditions the citizens can recall. So let me just read, let me read it. You guys can shoot it down if you want. But my amendment reads as follows. My amendment reads as follows. A new section one C, grounds for recall. Recall may also be initiated for any reason not defined in section one B. In addition to the terms and conditions of the recall position, petition, described in section one B, recall petition, a petition for recall initiated under this new section, that's the new section, shall describe the specific reason for the recall and provide a detailed description supporting the reasoning behind the recall.
So your, your only change is, you're, you're, you're allowing them to go beyond just these reasons. They still have to have a reason, but it doesn't necessarily have to be one of these seven.
They have to have a reason. The reason has to be enumerated in the petition, and a rationale behind the reason has to be enumerated in the petition. So, I mean, that's the democratic process. If we don't do this, then what this council has done is, in, instead, is to say, you know what? Folks, you can recall us under conditions that we determine are appropriate, not what you determine.
Well, I think Bob's face was first in.
Well, Scott was, no, Scott had his pen up first. Go to him.
Okay, Scott.
So, I can make this very easy, or I can make it long drawn out. Easy is, we vote on what Councilman Everidge put forward right now. The long drawn out.
He's got it in writing. I, I, I wouldn't mind if we could get all, get a.
My, my, my thought is, is that.
And Debbie, I know, she'll be over there, she'll need a copy.
My thought is, is that if you end up adding a new section.
Chris, I need another copy, Debbie.
It's really not a section. It's an addition to section one. I want to clarify that. Adding C, it basically alleviates the need for B and says, anybody can recall for any reason whatsoever, which is the same thing that was put for before, except now the only difference is, well, they have to put it in writing of Y. We already have all the reasons, I think, covered Y, so I'd ask Councilman Everidge, what reasons are not covered by B that he feels needs to be added to B?
So let me answer that question directly. You asked me, what reasons do I think?
Correct.
As an elected official, in a democratic process, it is not up for me to determine what the citizens want to do or don't want to do. Simple democracy. The citizens decide to pick a reason that's sufficient for them. They get enough signatures. They win. I'm not going to stand, um, let me answer the question. As an elected official, I have no right to sit here clinging to power and determine whether or not their reason for recalling me is valid. That's their choice. Very simple.
So if they, Councilman Everidge make the decision that they don't like your tie, they don't like you drink Diet Coke right now, they can recall you.
Scott, I think.
No, no, I'm asking a question. He drinks Diet Coke.
And if, if twenty percent of the people sign and say, we don't like that you drink Diet Coke, then you should be removed from office?
No, then it would go to a vote of the citizens.
No, no, but I'm just saying.
Then it would go to a person?
And who's paying for it? Who pays for the time and agony that goes through something that might be so menial as the Diet Coke?
Okay, so let me answer that. I think we've covered this before.
I, yes.
One of the, the, if you, if we think, common, if common sense here, if common sense here tells us that you're going to have a petition put down, I don't like the guy's tie, and twenty percent of the voters are going to sign, people are going to go to door to door. They're going to knock door to door, get twenty percent of signatures, then, Scott, I'm sorry, that's a ludicrous example.
I agree.
So to answer your question bluntly, to answer your question bluntly, it's not for us to decide, so the citizens.
Bob? The next time somebody wants to withdraw something, so I can't vote on it, I'm going to be ticked off, because that's what was promised. We sat at this table, okay, and the consensus was taken, and three out of the five said, uh-uh. Okay, and before we could hold an official vote, it was withdrawn.
So we vote.
So let me answer that one. Yes, I agree to.
And, wait a second, and we were told, three out of five don't want it, and you'll never see it again, and here it is thirty days later. And we've couched it in different words, and it's a whole lot shorter than it was, but it is the same thing that we didn't want last month, and we don't want it again this month. Am I correct?
Well, let me answer that first, though. So what, what I did last time was, I pulled my separate amendment off the table and said I would not submit it. I reviewed what's here. I talked to some citizens who told me, you know what? One of the objections at the table was correct. That you didn't clearly spell out, or you didn't ensure, you did not assure people and the members of the council who objected to the concept, that it would just be a recall for no reason at all. So the difference here is, the reason chosen by the citizens is enumerated and described in the petition. So what I was trying to do was address the shortfall in the original petition.
When my kid is bad, he may get a spanking. You don't just come home and spank him for nothing.
I always did, my kids. Did it wrong all those years, right?
My father did that.
I was doing it wrong all those years. Scott?
I'll, I'll make it easy. We'll go the easy route then. I say we vote on this change by itself, since it is a separate amendment to the existing.
I, I think that's probably a reasonable way.
But you can do it by consensus, because you can't vote it off.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, we go by consensus.
So, I, I'm also, if we make a decision on this, I don't want to see this again, either way, for or against.
Neither Ken nor I have weighed in on, on this yet. Ken, you got anything, or?
It just seems like we're nitpicking this thing apart, and I don't think we need any. You've got enough stuff in here to cover anything in the office, so I wouldn't vote for it.
This is the first time I've seen it. I would, you know, I would, would like more time to review it. However, I'm not against it in concept. I see that he's made that change to where I just, you know, it's no longer for no cause. You still have to have a cause. You have to state the cause, you have to let the citizens know what the cause is. It just doesn't have to be one of these seven causes. It is a little different than the other one, because the other one had two percentage differences. There was, uh, the other one had thirty percent for this and, uh, twenty percent for this. So it's a little different. I, you know, I thought, and, and so I saw it as being a little different, but it doesn't sound to me like that there's a consensus to go with it, so. I guess, Chris, it doesn't look like you got the support.
Ken, just, it's not nitpicking. To me, it's a fundamental question. Do the citizens have the decision to recall you for whatever reason they want?
Debbie, we're not actually taking a vote. We're just taking a consensus.
Okay, it's not there.
It's not actually a vote. We're just trying to, Chris is trying to get a consensus, I guess, to decide whether or not this is going to, this amendment's going to go forward. And I think, I think that, if, Chris, am I, am I right? It doesn't look like it's got it?
Uh, Peter, I think that my statement is that the council has decided by majority that it alone will decide what the citizens can and can't do when it comes time to recall us.
Okay.
That's my statement, and we've just done that.
And I, I.
And I have another.
I, I, okay, I, I don't think you've, that answered my question, but I see that Rick wants to weigh in, and I, I know that we'll, if I don't let him weigh in now, we'll all get a lot of emails tomorrow.
Now, this is very quick. I think Councilman Strong asked a question, what reason is not listed here? I'll give you one. It was mentioned last time. The elected official fails to meet voter expectations. That's not on here.
So it's something, it's something that could be added to B, correct?
Okay.
To still make B valid.
I have to agree with Councilman Everidge that you wish to determine what we can use as a reason.
Actually.
When you list them, that's exactly what you're doing. You're limiting the citizens to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and if you add the one I just suggested, eight. That's all I want to say.
And, and this needs more thought than it's been given thus far.
And I would like to say one thing, okay? When you say you've not met voter expectations, maybe I didn't meet this voter's expectations, but I met his.
But you're going to require thirty percent of the people to sign a petition to start the process. Bob, I cannot do this by myself. I can't take the people in this room and do it. People are going to march the street, what? People are going to mar- march the street, get the number of signatures that you determine, and if that is done, then it goes to referendum.
Right.
And people are going to vote on it, and the person who doesn't like the color of your tire doesn't stand a prayer.
Hey, Rick, just, just one response to you, to be fair, is that I think recommendations like that are great and should be brought forward so that the council can review them and see if they have merit. With regards to, um, this law on the books, I would question you. What was before it?
What was what?
What did the people have before it as a tool?
Six months ago. Here in this town?
Yes.
Six months ago.
What does the county have for a tool right now? What do the states have for a tool right now?
Let me ask you a question.
We are giving more power to the citizens and continue to do so on a daily basis.
Have you heard of referendums or, uh, recall petitions in the country anywhere?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so the county doesn't have it. Does that mean we can't?
No.
Sykesville has it.
We have one.
Sykesville, right across the way, has it.
Eighteen, eighteen percent of the, of the states have some form of recall, okay? Eight, it's really funny, but eighteen percent of the population in the state of Maryland, through their municipalities only, have the right to recall. And it's changed a little bit, because now Mount Airy's added to the list, okay? So not every, this is not something that everybody has.
Yeah, I, I don't understand the point.
Well, I understand that, and you know something?
Guys, I think we're.
If I start, if I start limit, if I start limiting what we do.
Bob, Rick, I, I, I think we're getting.
But we can't limit ourselves to what we do based on what others do. We can't be independent and independent.
Agreed. All right, I withdraw my, I withdraw my amendment. I have one more.
Uh, and the Ethics Commission wants to weigh in now.
Actually, I don't withdraw my amendment. I won't withdraw my amendment if you guys don't want it.
I'm Dick Swanson, private citizen.
Well, that's it.
I, I think the whole issue about, uh, cause or no cause is, is really moot point. And the reason I say that is, item six is malfeasance in office is defined to mean a doing of an act which a person ought not to do at all. And.
Kind of broad.
You, you, I could put in a, a petition for recall. That's my reason. The problem, I think, with the proposed code is the fact that it has the town council passing judgment, so.
Can you, can you belay your comments for a minute till I get my next amendment, in which is?
I think that's probably.
That's his other one.
I, I yield.
Are you going to stand up there just in case?
Chris, what's your?
Well, he yielded. Do I stand up there?
Good, just go ahead.
All right, and, and again, you know, just so you guys will shoot it down again. Going along with what, uh, Dick Swanson just said, on page four, special public hearing, section D, starting in section two. Within ten days of concluding the public hearing, the council shall, and then I strike everything until you get to the middle of section three, where it says, direct the chair of the Board of Supervisors to set a date for the recall. So, going with what I think, um, Dick Swanson's suggesting is, once again, why the council is involved in a citizen position, why the courts are involved, is beyond me. So, this is real simple. Petition's here, you have a public hearing, next stage, the council says within ten days, okay? Schedule, schedule the, uh, hearing, and off we go. I'm sorry, schedule the, the recall election, and off we go. There's no need for the council, there's no need for the courts to get involved. Again, same argument, citizens have dropped this on your table, under your rules, the limited rules you have, okay, go, vote. Why is council involved? I yield back.
Actually, that is.
That's my amendment.
That is the point I was going to make, that the, uh, the council should merely determine that the town clerk and the, uh, Board of Supervisors of election has done their job to determine that the petition meets the criteria, not the validity of the reason. And if you do that, I think what you've done is you've allowed the democratic process to go on, and you've retained. to go on, and you've retained your requirement that they have a reason, however supportable or unsupportable you may think it is. So that's my suggestion, and I do concur with what Chris is saying.
Dick?
Ooh, and, I'm sorry.
Hey, Dick.
Um, and, our own council just points out, Dick, up at the first part of this, there's gotta be a burden of proof and probable cause.
As I said, that has to be struck.
Yeah, I mean, that's even worse.
More has to be changed than what you're recommending.
Right, just, he said, it's throughout this whole thing.
So what I'm reading is that he needs to put it all on writing and put it in front of us.
Well, I'm not gonna do it, 'cause every time I throw some up there, all blue is gone.
No, I will, I will, no, I will support you on that.
I'll support that.
Okay, I would support you on that.
I have an issue with the way the council...
Because as a council, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be involved in that.
First, I think, everybody's telling you that you come back here, changing that.
As long as you don't have shovel in there somewhere, no cause.
'Cause then you've co-mingled it, and it's gonna get denied.
I won't promise, I will just say, I'm...
And can we get it earlier than the night of the council meeting? So then, we can check with our attorney.
So, may I suggest, Councilman Strong, we table this, and I'll take the guidance, the consensus from the council.
The only thing I would do is, if we're gonna make a change, change the only, because we all agreed on the only.
Well, we're not gonna vote on anything, and there are both walls as changes in this as...
Right, because you wanted to change the chair.
I'll make a motion to table it.
I have no problem, it's already...
Well, why am I thinking of doing this?
Okay, first off, let me reintroduce this, so that we're covered for the future, I have a second on the reintroduction?
Sure.
Okay, so now we're covered, now we can table it.
Okay.
Just, just to make sure we don't go beyond our timeframe, so it's been reintroduced, and we can amend and table all we want.
And I have, that's right.
And we're gonna move on.
And then I have counsel consensus to address.
To fix that issue.
Yes.
Which issue?
The, the issue of...
The issue of council...
The issue of the council being involved in determining the right or wrong of that.
Chris, if you're not sure about how far you can go, ask Bob.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a clarification?
We tabled it.
I'm not, I'm, I'm tabled, just for a second.
Overruled.
The consensus was for, for Chris's last amendment, to remove from issue, all the way down to section three...
Well, there was no specific amendment, the consensus is, Chris is gonna rewrite it, to remove all the stuff about the council having to approve the petition.
Right, alright.
With the exception of the limited approval of, yes, the clerk did her job, you know, 'cause we have to watch her every minute. And, and the board, and the supervisor of elect, supervisor of elections did their job.
Alright, okay.
And Debbie, you have the first part, where my amendment to modify this for recall without...
That's not, we didn't buy that.
And that one did, that one...
That one's right.
Is gone, okay.
Okay. Now, to the other popular topic of the night, two thousand fourteen dash three, the ethics ordinance.
Now he's not a public citizen.
I'm the other Dick Swanson, Chair of the Ethics Commission.
We haven't seen him forever.
Who, who are you?
Can you stop bothering about it?
I'm trying, I'm trying.
Sorry.
I, I'm here on, speaking behalf of the Ethics Commission, to make a request of the town council, and that request is that you have a motion that was tabled, we'd like it untabled, and we'd like a motion on the ordinance, with or without any changes, passed tonight, period.
So would have, so would it have to be an emergency motion?
It's within a seventy-five day period.
Well, was it...
It was within a seventy-five day period.
I got one.
It was, it was...
Yeah, was it not...
I think it was introduced last month again.
Yes, it was.
So then we're fine.
Yeah, I introduced it.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to move that we accept, for the sake of moving this forward, two thousand fourteen dash three, with two changes.
Second?
Well, let me say the two changes.
Get the changes.
Ken just wanted to get rid of it. Okay, and, um...
Did you remove?
Huh? In section thirteen dash five...
Page number, please?
It's on page twenty.
Does anybody need a copy?
I do.
She told us to save ours, guys, to save on paper. I saved mine, to save on paper, I killed one less tree this month.
I know.
I, I need one, because my version's old, I guess, I have a super page.
Okay, well, it's on page twenty, at the very top, part four, you'll see it, part four, you'll see, it currently reads, upon request by the official or employee whose financial disclosure statement was examined or copied, the commission or office designated shall provide, I wanted to, I wanna cross out, up to where it says, the commission, so it just reads, the commission or office designated by commission shall provide. In other words, if somebody comes and gets the stuff, and I want you guys to let us know right away who it is, I don't want us to have to find out and come ask.
I'm sorry, I was getting my copy, where, what?
Page twenty.
Page twenty.
Four at the top.
But he's, page four at the top, you'll see, it starts with, upon request, and then it says, the commission, I'll keep that in, says, the commission or the office designated by commission shall provide, I wanted to just read, the commission or office designated by commission shall provide, I wanna take out the requirement that we requested, because somebody could come in, and there's no duty to let us know that somebody come in and asked for all this information.
I don't consider that a material difference.
That's, that's just one of mine, so if somebody comes in and asks for it, we get, we, you know, whoever this finds out, okay? It's not, you know, you don't have to find out through the grapevine, that somebody came in and got all your personal data, that you'll, you'll be told that right away, so it's not, it's not, I would, I will go ahead, and, you know, for the sake of, I think, needing to get this passed, I will go ahead with the Ethics Commission's requirement for A...
I won't.
I, I know that, but this is my motion that I'm making, so that it should read, property located, wherever located, and since it already contains my section F two, which, which they haven't approved or denied yet...
Which page is that, Peter?
That's still on twenty, all of these are on twenty, Vilk on twenty, section...
Yeah, five percent.
Yeah, that's, that's my proposed language from last time, which they have not disproved of yet.
They have not seen it.
Right, they may kick it back at us, but they haven't kicked it back yet, so we can still run that, so that would be my motion for the changes, do I have a second?
Clarification, are you saying that you're going to take the five percent out?
No, I'm leaving that in, as it, as it's written here, as it's written on the copy that we have before us, 'cause I'm just letting, let everybody know that, that change I had made previously is still in here, and that's, and we're going with that.
So the two changes is your five percent, and...
No, the five percent's already in here.
Right.
The two changes are, go back to property wherever located, which they've insisted upon.
Right, they said, they wanna do with any property.
Well, it's actually in highlights, I mean, it's kind of in highlights on here, I would say, we'll go with the language they want, because we know that they've turned it down the other way already.
Okay.
And then, changing just that section four, so that we are notified right away if somebody comes in and gets our personal data.
So this still has the whole brother, sister, mother, stepson, whatever.
Immediate family, spouses, dependents.
It's immediate family, so it's been, it's been, it's slowly been defined to immediate family.
And they're not elected.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
But my understanding is that the, there was a clarification issued by the State Ethics Commission, and I believe I'm correct in saying that, let's take real property, that real property, obviously, in joint names, because one of the people is covered, has to, and I believe that if that joint property, or if that person, real property is in the spouse's name, that does not have to be disclosed.
Not according to this.
Hitch and both.
Well, in both, you, you've signed up for it, your name's on it, I got that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm looking at, and I think everybody else is the same instance, that if anybody else has anything that isn't involved with being elected, that that's a separate issue. I mean, financial disclosure, we do it for ourselves all the time.
Well, immediate family is, has been defined in here, a spouse or dependent child, which is a little, much better defined than it used to be. You know, when we started, I was like, man, I don't know what property my sister has.
Right.
And she's not gonna tell me.
But does it still go down to the level of detail, that it's like, I wanna know every single stock you have?
Well, that's what I've eliminated, basically, my two A, which we don't know if they're gonna accept, my two A basically pulls most of that out of the equation. I mean, unless, unless you're like, a mega millionaire and own more than five percent of a public trade company, well, I just wanna see if this'll get seconded, so we can move forward with...
Peter, I'll just, I won't second it, and I will vote against it.
Okay, but do I have a second, so we can at least...
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a second, now we can discuss it, Bob.
And, and it's not discussing that, and I'm gonna need a lot of help from Dick on this, we both were in contact after we got that letter on Wednesday, or Thursday, or whatever day it was, we were both in contact with Lynn Board down in Gaithersburg, and Frank Johnson down in Gaithersburg.
And Frank sent us home an email today.
And what they would like us to do, so as not to injure their case, if there's a part of this, you know what part, right?
Five.
Huh?
You're talking about the section five?
Is that, is that what they want us to not touch, or touch?
Not touch.
Okay, there's, there's, there's a part of this they would like us to leave intact, and then make any other changes we want, because the state is not going to accept these changes on this, they've determined, but it buys us time, so that they're, they're trying to get their case, and, and they want, if we pass something, they're afraid that we're not gonna be able to come back and take it back, that we are no longer gonna be, if we, if we were to pass this...
One of the five.
No, no, if, if we were to pass this as it sits now, or as it originally came to us, without our modifications here, we lose all hope, we, we lose the chance to be a co-conspirator in this thing.
But what they're saying is, we lose our, our litigative position, litigative, there is some, that's their opinion, the, there's some question in their minds, whether we also jeopardize our ability to influence the state legislature to make a change.
Now, has Gaithersburg resolved theirs?
No. Gaithersburg, my understanding...
Just, sorry, point of order, we're confusing folks, so, if you're watching from TV, just jumping into this conversation, there's no references, no background, if you're new to the conversation, there's no way to know what we're talking about, so just at a hundred thousand foot level, the reason why many on the council are opposed to this is 'cause we feel, at least, we feel it could make it very difficult to get people to run for office.
Right.
And it's asking for disclosures of all sorts of financial informations, that are frankly, personal information.
You're putting, you're putting us, what it does is, it puts us...
It becomes publicly available, in other words, anybody can get them.
And that includes wife, that includes your spouse, your spouse or significant other, and your children, and in a small town, this sort of disclosure as a reaction to the crimes in, say, Prince Dorser's County, is, is not appropriate, that's the background.
Well, we're, we're in a, we're in a situation now, where identities are being stolen every day, and now you're gonna put my, all of my information out there, okay?
So that, that level sets...
Right, no, you're right, and, and our Ethics Commission has not been opposing us, our Ethics Commission has typically thought we're on the right track, but the state's on a different track, so...
And, and one thing, 'cause, and the reason why I also bring it up, is because a citizen who was complaining about some things in town also sent a letter to the press, accusing me of blocking this, because apparently I'm benefiting financially from, from some reason, that information's been sent to the press, that's not even close to being true.
Well, you and I are blocking this together.
Oh, you're benefiting?
I haven't been accused of benefiting yet, but it's...
It's coming.
But you are.
Guilt by association.
You know, I'm just, I'm, I'm not happy with this, my wife cannot go to my dentist and get information on me without my signature, because of the HIPAA laws, okay? But anybody will be able to come down to this town hall and get my most personal financial information, and her most personal financial information.
And candidates before and after us.
Right.
And council people, and elected officials.
Actually, people haven't been elected, because I think you have to file when you run.
You have to file, yes.
I would almost stipulate, just one step further, is that this can have a broader reaching impact with regards to requesting information, besides identity theft, which is controlled information, that's not accessible to anybody unless there's a need.
Right.
Right, well, I could say, as, as a practical matter, what real property you own is publicly available information anyways, I mean, you, I can get that on all you guys, it's not real hard.
Lexis, LexisNexis has it all.
But, but I, but if you notice, my, my two A basically pulls a lot of the other personal data out, the reason I, that is still in here, is 'cause the state has not rejected that yet, which is why...
They haven't seen it.
It's in here.
No, they haven't seen it yet.
They haven't, right, they haven't rejected it, which means we can pass it back to them, and we can say, hey, here you go, guys, it's now in your court.
We can send out a proposal, minus one word, and they haven't seen that version.
Send it here, because I, I sincerely want us to be in, in line with, with Lynn, and, and she's pulling these five municipalities that have not signed this thing, and the two counties, okay, and, and trying to see if we, if we have enough oomph to make something happen.
Just a question on this, this has been going on for the last, what, two, three years, seemed like forever.
Two thousand and ten.
And I'm sure, how do we fight something that rest of the state, oh, but five of us are in for? I don't have a problem filling it out, the question, the form you gave me, I don't have a problem at all, if somebody wants to find out something about you or I, they can do it, what, I don't understand why, I'm sure the delegate had to fill this form out.
Do you wanna make it easy for them?
They, they probably did.
And I just don't see the problem, I don't see the problem, so I don't have a problem.
Ken, my, my issue is this, we're trying to make it easier for people to run to office, we want to encourage folks to run to office, we're making, this makes it a condition to file.
What's hard about this form, I don't understand what's so hard about this form.
Actually, mine was, I had a simple one, and mine was fourteen pages long, have you actually filled out the, the question, the question?
The one he gave me, Dick gave me, I got here, no problem.
But, your question is, we're trying to encourage people to run for office, if you have a personal belief, that your personal financial information is yours and private, then, then why should you have to sacrifice your privacy in order to run for elected office?
That's not my question, my question is, you've got all these jurisdictions that locate this, or going by it, how are we gonna fight it?
Well, actually, half the jurisdictions, over half the jurisdictions were exempted.
Fifty-seven were exempted.
How many's in on it, though?
Huh?
Plus, I think you had to fill this form out correctly.
At the state, at the state level, they do this, and actually, if you read this, it's very much geared towards...
Professional politicians.
For professional politicians, and, and, you know, we're, we're very part-time, Scott?
I vote no.
Well, all right, I'm, 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 let's...
I vote no.
Well, guys, I'll just call a question on it, all in favor say, of, it has, I amended it, I seconded it, okay, I mean, I, you know, I amended it, and I received a second.
Point of order, if, if you vote this down, can you re-vote it in a different fashion at the same meeting, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
It just gets proposed different, changes get different.
That's just his modification, we're voting. That's just his modification we're voting on.
I haven't told you why the Ethics Commission is saying, pass it tonight.
Well, do you wanna tell us?
Okay, so I'll reserve voting no until you give us a reason why.
All right. We still have the law of the books of the town of Mount Airy that was passed prior to the, the two thousand and ten state law, which made significant changes to financial disclosure in other sections. One of the other sections that is significantly changed is conflict of interest, there is no difference of opinion between the town of Mount Airy, the Ethics Commission, the town of Mount Airy, and the state Ethics Commission as to whether the proposed ordinance you have here, uh, does or does not comply with state law, it does, under conflict of interest. The Ethics Commission is in an awkward position because if there was a complaint filed, uh, which law do you follow, the town of Mount Airy code, which we're obligated to follow, state law, which we're obligated to follow? And I can tell you that if the town of Mount Airy Town Council does not pass an ordinance tonight and should we receive a ethics complaint, the Ethics Commission will determine what law applies, we will make a decision on that complaint based on that law, and that decision will stand. So, uh, we don't want to be in that position, we believe the town council should determine what law applies, and in this area where there's no dispute, we want this ordinance passed with or without, or preferably with, the type of changes that the Town Council President is talking about, but we'll take it either way so we can have all the other sections of this code comply with, with state law, that's, that's our purpose.
All right, Scott?
So, a question I have, um, is that if he said that Mount Airy, the state, the county, conflict interests are all the same, that portion of it, then there's no conflict, whichever one you follow, they're all the same, so throwing that out the window and looking at anything that's different is proposed changes, so if we pass it right now, right, then what I'm looking at is that we're passing whatever changes we do and the state may not necessarily accept them, so they're still gonna have the conflict and have to follow state.
Let, let, let me back up a minute here. Let's say, let's say that the, uh, Town Council passes the ordinance as, as it's written now, which obviously has certain sections in it that the state would object to.
Okay.
So they, they, they reject parts of the code which exclusively affect financial disclosure of elected officials, they do not affect the conflict of interest section. Even if one interprets the state law to say that a rejection of one sentence or one section nullifies the entire law, does not change the fact that if the town of Mount Airy Ethics Commission has a complaint, that the law in that section, regardless of what the state Ethics Commission says, is the same. The reason for doing that is that if you have two different laws and the town, and the Ethics Commission selects the law that they believe applies under conflict of interest, they make that determination, the individual, the complainant or the respondent, who may disagree with that decision, could simply file an action in court saying that I want it overturned, not on the merits of it, simply on the fact that in their opinion you used the wrong law.
Right.
Regardless of the merits of that case, we have now put ourselves into a could be protracted litigative position at much expense to the town, taxpayers, and also have postponed the actual implementation of whatever that decision is, and those are two things that under the current conflict we have between the, the town and the state is unnecessary, it totally is unnecessary, and let's do away with it, we, the, the Ethics Commission has been patient for three years, October first, two thousand and eleven, when we first had to certify that our code complied with state law for financial disclosure of elected officials, we sent them a letter in October first, two thousand and eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, four letters in three years saying that the town is in non-compliance with state law. That, we were probably naive in saying, and waiting this long, thinking that this process would get resolved, either through the Town Council making a change, a reinterpretation by the State Ethics Commission, a change in the law, none of that's happened, and this, and the Ethics Commission says, we don't want to bear the risk anymore of having a significant difference between the law of the town of Mount Airy and the state law when it comes to conflict of interest. We have also brought up the fact, and we've said this, by the way, right along, this is not an issue between the town and the state Ethics Commission, it's a legislative issue. If the legislative issue fails, which has failed at least two times, if not three, the Ethics Commission has said this is a litigative issue, and, and by litigative issue we mean that MML should step up to the plate, which by the way, from what we see, they haven't.
I would have to agree with you, Vic.
Yeah, they haven't. MML, or, or group of municipalities that feel uncomfortable with this regardless of whether they've passed a law consistent with state, should get together and say that, make a decision whether you have a litigative grounds to overthrow the law as it's on the books, your only two choices are litigative or legislative.
Scott?
So unless we can decouple the conflict of interest and just make one little paragraph that's conflict of interest and you pass that, then, no.
Let me ask you a question, Vic.
So, I'm sorry, let me just-
If we send this with Peter's changes, does that get our ethics out of the hot seat?
It gets the Ethics Commission out of the hot seat.
Okay, and they're still not gonna accept it because we're changing financial disclosure?
We don't know.
We, we don't know, the probability is, uh, that the five percent, they may take exception to, that probability, but we don't know for sure.
Okay.
But that's something, but it does solve Dick's problem.
Right.
Cause Scott, Scott's idea, Scott's idea is the past, cause there's no issue, I don't think any of us have an issue with the ethics.
It's the financial disclosure.
Right, so Scott's idea of passing the ethics.
You mean just-
Thank you, thank you.
Can you, yeah, is it, is it so intertwined, you know, that we can decouple it, I don't, I'm not sure you could or want to do that on the fly here at the table, you would have-
One thing is, is that you- Delete those letters altogether, you omit them, and you send it in with all the stuff we do agree and say, we agree to all this, and we omit everything else.
But there are probably cross-references in what you're about to pass to things you're not going to, well, I know, but I can't do it on the fly here.
Come on, Tom, you're good.
Can I suggest-
Plus, the other thing you have to keep in mind, you know, I'm, I'm pretty sure that we have some ordinance on the books related to what you must disclose.
Yeah.
Yeah, so now you're going to mismatch your conflicts with, and leave intact what you've got in place now.
No, the financial disclosure, I think, is-
You could end up, top, top, I think, I think you could end up with a really bigger mess.
Yeah, it could be a bowl of spaghetti by the time you're done.
So, but what if taking, using Scott's, using Scott's suggestion, what if we table this, have you-
Well, that, but Dick says he, he wants to do it now.
Dick needs something by-
I'm not voting for-
Okay, well, guys, this is, this is out there, you know, it, the state has not, the state has not approved this yet, it contains some changes, they may, Dick thinks they're gonna kick it back anyways, but at least it will solve his problem if we pass it because they'll only kick back a few things, not the whole thing, um, so let's go, we'll have a vote on this since we've discussed it and gone around, then we can go from there.
Gambling man.
Um, all in-
Gambling man.
All in favor of this as I, as it's been moved-
I'm sorry, you vote?
Vote on, on my motion.
To accept two, fourteen, three with the two changes.
With the two changes, correct.
For the record, you wanna just read those changes again?
Bless you.
The changes were on page twenty, very top, section four, you're gonna cross out everything before where it says the commission. So we'll read the commission, our office designated by the commission shall provide the official with a copy of the name and home address, so in other words, it's an automated thing, it's not a, we have to find out that somebody got her information, we have to come in and ask for it, if somebody comes in and gets a packet with all her personal information, we're notified, right, we're basically notified, and then the other one was, um, since we know that under F one A, they have already rejected the limitation to Carol Frederick Howard of Montgomery Counties to put in their language, which is actually already on here, meaning located wherever, you know, located wherever, well, so it's probably wherever located, which is their wording that's in here. And I, and I just mentioned that this contains my, right under that, my two A, which they quite possibly may reject, we just don't know yet, but I think, I think that two A solves a lot of problems, from my perspective, but they may go with it, they may not, the SEC thinks that's fine, I think that's where I got that number from, I think that's the Securities Exchange Commission number for-
So that's where your five percent is, in the two A.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, I think that's what the, what the SEC uses for when you have to do certain disclosures. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
We get two to-
And I, I'm gonna say, I'm not opposed to what you're saying, I'm opposed to the fact of what they're asking for, I have no problems with it.
We got two to two and I'm waiting for Bob.
I'm gonna go aye for, with the changes.
Okay, it passes then.
So, Dick, yours, yay, two years.
You got something to say to the state, and they can send it back, but we've bought a few months.
I want everybody to know that I'm damned uncomfortable doing that.
Bob, I am too, I, you know, I am too, like I said, this was, you know, I modified it with what I thought I could maybe, maybe, maybe still get away with.
And I, I think, I'm hoping that it gets kicked back.
And I appreciate-
And Dick thinks it will.
I appreciate all of you for fast-tracking this.
We appreciate, we appreciate your effort, Dick.
It went faster than the master plan.
All right, I'm not sure, Dick.
Three years.
Okay, up next, we have Resolution two thousand and fourteen dash fifteen, which is our homestead tax credit, um-
It's a draft.
We probably have to do this at the November meeting, correct?
I'm sorry, I was thinking about-
We're on your thing, this is the one you always yell at us about, homestead tax credit, we have to do this at the November meeting, so I'm going to introduce a-
It's a resolution, so we don't have-
Oh, we don't even have to do that, okay, well, I'm going to propose that we keep it at zero, which is what it has been for just about as long as anybody can remember. Got a second from Bob, any discussion?
I see, tied to the price of pork bellies.
Well, it's, actually, it has blanks in it.
It's all blank.
Oh, you can get it from-
Says draft.
Oh, I wrote the original, Chris assigned that has numbers in it.
Oh, so Chris can vote on it.
Oh, Chris is special.
I'm not gonna tell, I'm not gonna tell anybody.
Okay, so, um, but I proposed it with zero, that is the right number to go in there, zero, okay, I thought that was what it was, zero, I was, it seems strange to me being zero percent, but, um, so I've got, uh, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was, yeah.
I think that a hundred percent, zero percent count is, is the proper way.
Yeah, the number, right, it's, it's, the numbers that we always use.
Right, the numbers that we always use.
All right, unfinished business.
Can, can, I wanted to add something real quick to unfinished business that came up late, um, the financial plan, strategic plan's a little bit stalled right now, and that's because we're kinda busy doing the master plan, um, we've got good numbers, but of late, I've been thinking, I'm not so sure we have the correct resources available to ourselves in town in order to plan for the future, in other words, the idea is this, with the ten, eleven million dollars we have in surplus, we expect Community Task Force to come forth relatively soon with some idea, some numbers, the master plan sets out a number of things we need to do, Center Street for Economic Development and other things, is the council open to the idea of hiring a consultant, having the consultant look at the amount of money we have in reserves, looking at the master plan and the things that it describes we want to do, and coming back to us with suggestions on how we can best invest the money for quality of life and economic development, because looking at these numbers-
That's on what this consultant's gonna cost.
Always does.
Eleven million dollars? Yeah, ten million, but, no, I mean, no, we're not gonna, I don't-
I'd wait for nine.
I don't wanna spend a lot of, don't wanna spend a lot of money, but I'm just throwing it out there that, I mean, if the councils thinks that this might be a good idea, then certainly we'll go out and canvass to see what such a study might-
I'm willing to talk about it, depending upon what it'll cost, just from my two cents.
I, I'm, I'm willing to, to entertain a discussion, but, um, same thing, what does it cost?
It don't know.
You know, if we're paying ten percent, yeah.
Well, no, find, find out what it costs for the proposal, present it to us, and then we can make a determination, we don't have enough information.
I think it's worth looking at, like I say, cost is-
Yeah, cost is it, right?
Unf- all right, thank you.
All right, proposed changes to planning commission master plan recommendation, uh, that is going to be set for a public hearing of the changes, um, at our November meeting at seven, which will be on November-
Third.
Third, all Souls Day. Okay, um, and I guess we need to introduce the master plan, is that to vote on at the November meeting?
No, I don't think there's any requirement that you introduce it sixty days in advance like you would, this is not an ordinance, you would simply need a motion at the November third meeting to accept it as amended or, or however you wish to do that, but-
Now, for those, for those who don't know, we sat down, the plant, the, the council sat down about a week ago with the planning commission and went over all the stuff on there, a few changes were made, not a whole lot, um, town staff is incorporating those into the plan and making the little changes to the plan, cause sometimes you change something and it ends up changing sixteen paragraphs, you know, and charts and things, so town staff is working on that, that will be voted on at the, uh, November third meeting, was there anything else we needed to do technically for this at this point? Uh, planning will be, I think planning will be going back over these changes at their next meeting, which will be-
Twenty.
October twentieth?
I believe it was.
So there will be a planning meeting October twentieth, where planning will be discussing the changes that the town council suggested to them, and then it will be kicked back to us for a vote at the November meeting, and there will be a public hearing on the changes to supplement the public hearing on everything that we already had, did I get all that right from tech, Debbie's pointing at me.
Well, I just, Lisa passed out, um, a packet with, um, it was also on-
Right, it's a changes matrix, which we all have here.
Changes, Heather, um, did the chart with all the, uh, the map and the text you did.
Right.
And then we had two comments come in just to the council, because we stopped accepting planning commission comments, they're now to come to the council.
Council comments, yeah, I'll, I'll just let you guys know, um, we did get a, on the, cause we all got the ones from the owners of the eighty-four parcel.
Right.
I did give them a call and told them that the council had, that the council had recommended the planning, that we agreed with them and dropped the eighty-four lumber property from our, our thing, since-
The one thing about this change, um, in the big sheet, there's no page numbers, so I'm just gonna link, it looks like it's the only one that has my name on it, that should be struck on me because-
That's strong, okay.
Which ones? Chapter four, plain use and zoning.
This here?
Yes, the table.
Okay, you said chapter four.
That's the first.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'm reading the right thing, strike the whole thing, I didn't say that, I wrote down comments, what was presented to me is the reason why and so, okay.
Well, if I'm reading their way of doing this, like, and we're just getting this here at the table tonight, uh, the description, the good, the description of the parcel, you've got planning commission's recommendation-
Right, proposed change is what I'm saying. I'm saying, strike that.
Oh, cause you, you, all right.
That's not my proposed change.
Cause it's not, oh, okay, so, okay, that was what was, that was what we were told your proposed change was.
I understand, that's not my change.
Okay, well, since we're not admitting this anyway-
I understand, but I want that passed on.
Yeah, yeah, no, okay, okay, that is good to know, yeah.
Cause it's going to planning, so I want planning to see it.
Right, 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 yes, Chris, you got that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then Peter, for additional clarification, because what most folks are concerned about is not necessarily the passing of the master plan, they're concerned about when the zoning actually is done.
Correct.
So if we could just repeat the dates on that, this is-
Well, the zoning, the ma, the master plan will be passed in November, the ordinance changing all the zoning will be introduced in December and will be voted on in January, if everything goes as scheduled, um-
With a public hearing before-
Correct, there will be a public hearing before that, but as a, as a, as a practical matter, we really can't vote for zoning that disagrees with what the master plan says that we just passed, so we would have to go back and amend the master plan-
Add the back of change.
Right, which would, you know, and-
Belabor it.
Uh, yeah, well, it just, that wouldn't, if, you know, it's not, as a practical matter.
Right, but the key date for-
Two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah, if you're looking for your zoning to change, it won't be till January, or later.
The key date, I think.
Yeah, so don't start doing anything on your property yet, that's the key.
Or filing suit.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good, all right, next up, approval for MS four operational agreement with Carroll County Code, this is the stormwater remediation, which we've, these, we've got this nice cost sharing thing here from Carroll County.
Are you gonna yell at us about more stuff?
Look, we already gave you one of those things tonight.
He's, he's got a different hat on now.
We're gonna, we're gonna-
This is the water hat, right?
Yeah, he's wearing the water hat now.
I'm hearing, yeah. Tom, you and I are listed here, uh, we have to have an organizational meeting, are we not, are we my first over?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I guess, do it in Monaco as well, but, um, the only thing I would say about this agreement is, is, you know, it has been hashed over and reviewed multiple times by every town attorney, first of all, including myself, uh, each of the municipalities in the, in the county, um, so, uh, as a result of that, this is the product of many people's work and input, um, you know, I would say that, therefore, it is probably not a perfect document, as imperfect as the, the number of people generating comments about it, but it is one that I would say addressed most of my concerns, uh, with the original draft, and, uh, I would say that that's probably true for each of the municipalities and each of the town attorneys would probably, uh, agree to that, um, again, it's not a perfect document, but we did have a, 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 a very good opportunity, multiple opportunities to weigh in and request changes, to understand what was being written and why, so, um, I'll just leave it by saying that as the town attorney, I'm comfortable with the, the draft that you have in front of you, so.
Dick?
I think by way of background for, uh, citizens, anybody watching on TV, is that this is a memorandum of agreement between Carroll County and eight municipalities in Carroll County, and the purpose of that agreement is to work jointly together to meet the soon-to-be official permit requirements for stormwater management at counties and municipalities. Usually what happens is counties are under what's called a phase one permit, which is a higher level. a higher level of compliance. Municipalities are under a, what's called a phase two permit, which is a lower level, obviously. Carroll County has proposed that all municipalities join them in their phase one permit, and in order to meet the stormwater management requirements, they are offering, um, to pay eighty percent of any remediation effort done within a municipality over the five-year period of the permit. That requires that each municipality put in a specific amount of money, which varies depending on how many acres of estimated, uh, impervious surface that need to be, um, dealt with. Our amount starts out at sixty-seven thousand six hundred, I believe, uh, a year. The agreement says that it will be increased by five percent over each one of those years. The reason for that is the fact that the WRCC, which is the representatives from the municipalities and the county, uh, WRCC, I believe, is, uh, Water Resource Community, what's the last name?
Commission or council or somewhere?
Council, I think it is.
I think it's committee.
Or committee. Uh, they're representatives from the each municipality and the county. They, therefore, they have no real legal standing, so they can't offer an agreement, uh, or vote on an agreement to obligate the town to funds. So, it's the responsibility of the council to do that. That's why this is a five-year agreement. There's a fixed dollar amount that's in there for each one of the five years is your financial commitment.
Are there any questions or clarification that's needed?
One thing I'd like to throw in there. When we first started talking about this quote rent tax, this remediation and all these new big words we learned, you know, we were talking in excess of two million dollars.
Over five-
And is that right, Chris?
Yes, over five.
Because I, I think we were the one that was on what, and we, we were talking in excess of two million dollars, and we're not anywhere near that. Okay, so, I mean, this is, this is probably a decent deal.
The caveat to that is this does not affect our Frederick County side. The Frederick County side is still-
We still have forty percent to deal with over there.
Right.
We still have responsibility, and it could very well be a separate stormwater permit that we need to obtain for the Frederick County side. So, we'll be under the Carroll County's umbrella on the Carroll side, but we could very well, pretty sure, we're gonna have to get a separate permit for the Frederick side from MDE, and ensure compliance by doing projects on the Frederick side, and we will be paying for that totally ourselves.
Right.
Scott?
So, one thing I noticed about exhibit C, everybody knows I'm a money person, um, it's really interesting that Mount Airy is the second highest cost share based on impervious surfaces. We are right under Westminster, which I find really interesting that we're gonna pay the second largest amount. We're only paying for ha, sixty percent of Mount Airy. So, we still have another forty percent. When you add that in there, we're gonna be damn well close to Westminster in the amount of price that we're paying.
Most of our commercial and industrial is on the Carroll side.
Yeah, I mean, we have a lot of-
But is, do we have a lot more impervious surface?
But what I'm saying is almost all of our parking lots, your Walmarts, your, where Super Fresh was, your Safeway, your Wise Markets, those parking lots are all on the Carroll side.
Understood. Are we saying we have more impervious surfaces or close to Westminster?
If you jump back, if you jump back to exhibit B, okay, it shows you that on the Carroll County portion only, and I don't remember what the total was, maybe you remember what the total was, of Frederick and Carroll, three hundred and thirty-eight acres. Okay, that's our, our impervious surfaces, and if you look at some of these other, there's, we are the second highest there. Westminster is above us. Okay, and then there's not, another one of these municipalities has the impervious surface.
And that's only part of us, so when you add in Frederick.
Right.
When you add in Frederick, the, the total is actually, uh, four hundred and thirty-nine acres of impervious, uh, surface.
So, Frederick's only a hundred?
Yes.
Right, 'cause all of, all of, all of our parking lots are on the Carroll side?
So, we need to move them.
I mean, I mean, there's, you know, we have on that side, you know, we've got some, some developments, but we don't have any parking lots really for, for the most part.
I mean, we, we've always had, we've always built our, we've always been compliant at the time with our stormwater management, management regulations. It's just that when the new regulations got adopted, they want you to go back and remediate twenty percent of that to bring it up to the current standard. So, we've never been out of compliance at the time that we've built these structures. It's just that the state is requiring us to go back, go back retroactively and upgrade twenty percent.
So, think of, right, and the other point that was, Scott, actually, we're paying twenty percent now. We're, everybody in town is still paying a hundred percent because Carroll is gonna share it with us, but where does Carroll get their money? From us. So, the Carroll County Commissioners are kind enough to, and kudos to them, kind enough to kick even more of their money back. Go back to what Delegate Schultz said this evening. The crook, how's they, the crooks in Annapolis, the crooks in Annapolis, aside from the billion-dollar shortfall, has now figured out yet another way to get a couple hundred thousand dollars out of us. I mean, this is just crazy.
The funding, um-
But that's why you're second highest, because we are-
The funding from this is actually from a bond for the Carroll County money. They're-
It's taxpayers' money.
Yeah, it is, but it's a bond.
It will be drawn out of our money that we normally get from our town and county agreement on Carroll. It's gonna be, you know, subtracted out of that before it comes to us, so.
So, they're just gonna skim it right off the top.
They wanna make sure that they get it, so that's the mechanism that we're gonna use to get it.
So, are they taking it out of fire department?
Okay, guys, what's, all right, we have, we have a citizen comment here.
See what happens when the mayor's not here to keep us under.
Dick, Doc O'Brien wants to say something.
Scott, the five-year total commitment financially of Mount Airy is three hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars. So, rather than, uh, spending two mil, what is the number here? Rather than spending one million six ninety.
Are you out of interest? I got three thirty-eight on here.
Three thirty-eight on here.
On exhibit C.
No, no, that, I say, the commitment in this agreement is Mount Airy will pay sixty-seven thousand dollars in, uh, year one. They'll pay seventy thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty in year two.
Right, keeps growing.
That's a, it keeps growing. When you add that number up, it should be three hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred.
So, it's an extra forty, it's an extra almost forty thousand on top of what the initial municipal-
What's the, what's the three thirty-eight number then?
Is that a down payment?
That's the first year. What?
That, what, oh, no, the first year is sixty-seven six.
Sixty-seven thousand a year.
What's the three thirty-eight?
Was that three hundred and thirty-eight?
Second year is seventy thousand nine eighty. We compound that out at five percent.
Column's wrong.
The column is wrong.
Now, Carroll County's picking up the cost of that.
Look at the name, look, it said initial, and this implies your first-
Right, and that's why I'm questioning what that-
That is, that is your initial, but Carroll County is paying eighty, eighty percent of that, so this is all you pay.
So, we're only getting-
Remember, Carroll County's picking up eighty percent of it.
So, so the, the, the label on the column should be more substantial. It doesn't really explain what it is.
Carroll County's cost.
Right, that's, yeah, something like that. Okay. Doc O'Brien, Dick, if, if Doc O'Brien wants to say something.
Is this a five-year payment and then it's done? What happens afterward?
Well, we don't really think it's ever gonna be done.
We keep going.
Once the state starts taxing, they don't cut, they don't stop. How many taxes do you know that have gone away?
No, no, is, is there any forecast for the year?
Yeah, five percent every year.
This is a five-year agreement. This is a five-year agreement, of which the next five years-
At the end of five, who knows?
Well, it's gonna be based, it's gonna, the next five years will be based on EPA and MDEs.
The water, the waste plan, the watershed implementation plan. This is just one little piece of the watershed implementation plan.
Right.
So, we don't know any, there are other additional requirements that are just gonna come down on us.
Wouldn't it be easier if we just gave Annapolis all of our money now, everything we have, and then we just start taking out loans?
It's just a sponsor.
So, what are we dealing with this? Is this-
We have to approve this agreement. You have to-
Well, this is gonna be signed on, on February twenty-third.
Right, well, it says, we have to give, we have to give the mayor authority to sign this, so it sounds like that.
I'll make a motion.
That we give the-
That, that we accept this agreement.
I will second Bob's motion. Any discussion on whether, we're, we're authorizing the mayor to sign this.
Great.
We have a choice.
We really don't have a choice.
I, I will say this, that's a little number, okay? Frederick County is for that, for that hundred and one acres or whatever in Frederick County, it's gonna cost us way more than this.
Wait, you just told us tonight that Frederick kicks out.
Well, they do, okay? But for, for this, for this Frederick County side's gonna cost more than the Carroll County side.
We just don't know. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Did you vote at all, Chris?
All abstained.
Chris abstained.
It's that way.
All right. Back to Dick with the sewer presentation.
Wow, you got Alex and you got money. God.
First thing I'm gonna do is apologize to everybody taking up all your time. Uh, but this is-
Is there like a song that goes with this? That's what I was kinda wondering if there's, follow the bouncing ball.
Can we, can we fire up the, uh-
Let's try and-
Fire it up the PowerPoint. Uh, just start pushing switches down till the right ones go off. Uh, wrong one, next one, keep going. Ah, that's a good start, okay. Did you switch phones?
My AV crew is falling apart.
Is somebody sending these correspondence or something?
Is there something else?
Retroactive? Somebody has to be forwarding messages.
Since last year.
Somebody has to be forwarding messages. Somebody must have put, I'm gonna ask him what he knows.
I'm gonna guess when you got a new phone.
No, I've had this phone number forever.
Did he somehow sign onto one of your accounts?
All right, tech control, let's keep going.
Well, Scott's dad is getting all of our emails going back to last May.
But I don't know why he's-
Can he help with the PIA?
Might. Yeah, actually, tell him to start searching. He might be able to send you all your messages. I don't really stand. Well, I'm, I'm gonna find out what address it is. Maybe we switched to Comcast. I wonder if they're going to Verizon, which is what we're gonna sell, and because I don't exist on Verizon anymore, they sent it. That would make sense, so it's a different name.
Yeah, they would, they would figure that out, because they're just running it.
What are we doing?
We're waiting for a presentation.
Okay.
Sugar.
Well, these are not typically hot swappable. They have to be in when you start.
Well, Melissa, we can, it was working this morning. Let's show this on the door.
Do you have all the function?
Function, function seven.
And when I put it in, it's gone. I have to go through my screens.
Uh-huh.
Peter, let's just hold it up and go through it.
I'll just hold it up.
Now, you need to send it up there, because it's trying to send the signal off the laptop off, and now you just switch your video just like.
All right, what do I hit? I hit power on, and then you've gone.
Isn't this when you're supposed to do the song, because they're there on television?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you're live on, you're live on TV, too.
While we're waiting, I can actually make a video.
I don't have a video.
Let me make an announcement while we're doing that.
I have a picture in the list.
Oh, yellow, what is that?
Carroll County is actually giving away, uh, free rain barrels to people who live on the Carroll County side of Mount Airy and, uh, an area that encompasses that going up north twenty-seven for a couple of miles. And Carroll County Times had reported accurately-
You got it, Dick.
Okay, let me just finish this. Had reported accurately that, uh, Carroll County was offering the rain barrels where you would, uh, buy one for eighty-five dollars and get one free. The county has since decided that they actually will give the rain barrel away to anybody who lives, uh, in, up twenty-seven, which would include the Carroll side, Carroll County side of Mount Airy. If you're interested in getting a free rain barrel, which I think the only obligation is you may have to take a short little, uh, course on how to use a rain barrel, uh, but it's the Department of Land Use Planning and Development, it's the Bureau, at the Bureau of Resource Management. And I give, the phone number is, well, I would call Glenn Edwards, four four three, three seven five, zero five six two. Again, that's, uh, if you're Carroll County resident, uh, free rain barrel courtesy of Carroll County. Are we ready?
Yep, you're up, Dick.
Thanks, Dick.
Okay, the Water and Sewer Commission, in conjunction with, uh, Brian Johnson and, and the Sewer Department, worked on putting this together as kind of a reminder to citizens, and the title is basically, "Respect Your Sewer, and It Will Respect You." Go to the next slide, please. I don't have a way you can see this, but just as a reminder to people, uh, the sewer line comes out of your house, goes to the street, is the responsibility of the property owner, not the town. The town's responsibility, along with everybody who has hooked up to the system, is the sewer system itself and the wastewater treatment plant. So, if you have a problem between the street and your house, or in your house that deals with, uh, your sewer system, first don't call the town. Determine that that blockage is coming somewhere, uh, beyond your house, because this is your responsibility, and anybody who's ever had a big problem with this line in here knows that's, uh, very expensive to maintain or repair. All right, next slide, please. The, the purpose of this is to really talk about what should not go in to the sewer system. And the law says, uh, water and waste containing substances, substances which are not amicable to treatment or reduction by the sewer treatment processing employee should not go in the city. And amicable is a simple term, meaning that if the water, if the sewer system was not designed to handle that, you shouldn't put it in. Simple, that's what it means. So, but in everyday life, if you go to the next slide, uh, the results of ending up with putting any inappropriate solids or liquids can cause damage to your portion of the sewer system and the town's portion of the sewer system, and may cause a blockage. This can become a public health hazard and a major cleanup, and you can incur significant expense, and the town can incur significant expense and liability. Uh, and under the new, or the revised, uh, sewer ordinance, a section was strengthened that places more liability on a business or a resident that contributes to the blockage of the sewer if it could be determined that they caused it. And, and when you talk about significant liability, as anybody who's worked with a town, you're talking a large amount of money. So, respect your sewer. What should not go in there? Well, obviously, and I'll just run through this list closely, fats, oils, and grease, uh, and we have an extensive ordinance on that that applies to restaurants, but just as a reminder, uh, fats, oils, and grease being going down your drain from residents is, uh, inappropriate and illegal. Uh, baby wipes. You know, why is that? Because they don't dissolve. They clog, and they have to have screens in the sewer system that periodically have to pull out and clean out to get such things as all the baby wipes out of them, so we don't get a, a blockage. Uh, that's also disinfecting, disinfecting wipes that you may use, and non-dissolvable flushable wipes.
Yep.
And wipes advertised as dissolving may not be, and-
And they don't.
Pardon?
Firsthand experience.
Firsthand.
They don't.
I don't know how many people saw this article in the Carroll County Times, uh, back at September sixteenth, but it's a reprint of a Bloomberg article. Report from New York Sewers shows, quote, "Flushables" wipes aren't. And, um, they may be flushable, but they don't dissolve in most cases. Now, some do and some don't. Uh, but those that don't can cause, uh, clogs. New York City, uh, London, and- New York City, uh, London, and numerous municipalities have had problems with sewer backup and clogging due to, uh, using baby wipes, flushable wipes. Next slide, please. Now we get into, uh, such things as-
Bones.
String, uh, start to your stringy vegetables. Uh, pasta, rice, fruit pits, seeds, and, uh, most other food scraps do not go in the sewer system. Yes?
So, I guess the question I'm gonna have is, are you telling everybody not to have a garbage disposal?
Oh, I'm getting to that.
All right.
Uh, then we have bones, non-biodegradable products of any kind, if you go to the next slide. Sanitary products, pesticides and herbicides, prescription drugs and over-the-counter medications. I just want to make a point here. These will go very well through the sewer system, very well through the wastewater treatment plant, and they will be in the discharge just as they went in. And I don't know how many people you have read articles, and particularly I've seen them in Washington Post with, uh, streams where, uh, it's having a biological impact on the, uh, aquatic life to the extent that some species can't reproduce. Some of them are both male and female now. So, it's, it's a serious environmental issue about, uh, medications and prescriptions. And just any, uh, other similar thing that you've seen above. And I'll just mention about, when you talk about the fruits and the vegetables and all the stringy stuff. The problem with that is, and let's talk about, next slide, yeah, there we are. Garbage disposals. A garbage disposal is not a garbage disposal. Simple as that. And if you... Well, let's say, a sewer system is not called a sewer, uh, garbage system. A wastewater treatment plant is not a garbage treatment plant. And if you follow that, you'll find, you'll realize that if there's something that the plant and the sewer system was not designed for, don't put it in the garbage disposal. Period. What it can go through, well, what it was designed to do. You know? Your bathroom sink, your toilet, your shower, water you run out of your tap, your dishwasher, and your washing machine. Basically it. Yes?
So dishwashers have food go through them, too, depending on how well people clean their stuff?
Most of them have a screen, though.
Yeah, most of them have a screen.
Most of them have a screen, and hopefully you do something to scrape that.
I'm just curious.
It's something that you should check, though, and clean out.
Right, but I'm just saying, I'm looking at, it almost sounds like, don't put anything down anywhere where the sewer hooks up, other than a liquid.
I, I, this is a whole education to all of us.
I, it is, and, but I would just assume that most people thought they could take a garbage disposal and you put food scraps in there, whatever. Garbage disposals have teeth in them that chew everything up?
Yeah, no, I mean, I learned that just from being on a, on a septic system, that you just don't do it. You just don't do it, you throw it away.
What they do is they chew everything up. But what they chew up, maybe biodegradable in the long run, but it's just smaller pieces of a bigger object that go through the entire system that if you have other things, usually, if you have, uh, fats, oil, and grease, if you have, uh, baby wipes, or anything in there, that also comes and contributes to blocking up your sewer. And it also causes problems at the wastewater treatment plant. So, when you really get down to it, and I had this discussion with my wife about, well, what, why have a garbage disposal? Or it came with my house, or, you know, it really doesn't-
How did you do in that argument? Did you win, Doug?
The answer, the answer to the question is, and as Brian Johnson, probably the worst invention ever, ever to come down the pike.
From a wastewater treatment perspective.
From a wastewater treatment plant. And I just wanted to point out, there are a number of cities, in Canada in particular, some municipalities and, and cities in the United States, and that ban garbage disposal. They're banned. In Europe, they're mostly unknown. And I, I just happened to pull one, there was a, a ban in Ottawa, Canada, on, uh, garbage disposals. And the manufacturer came and they gave a big presentation to say why. They thought it was okay, and presented studies. And the bottom line of, uh, what the Town of Ottawa said, in their opinion, uh, is the using of, uh, garbage disposals subjects food waste to costly and unnecessary processing at the wastewater treatment plant and the composting of resulting biosolids. In addition, the potential for increase in sewer blockage, sewer lateral and main maintenance, and wastewater treatment plant operating costs reinforces the disadvantages of using these units in the city of Ottawa. Any advantage associated with the unit are outweighed by the negative impacts on the city's water, wastewater, maintenance, and operating costs. So, bottom line is, respect your sewer, respect you, and-
Compost.
Compost.
My wife's a composter. She's always saying, "Where does that to the compost thing?"
In the early sixties, if you have central air conditioning, color TV, and a garbage disposal, you had made it. And we're finding out now that it's not the-
I have a question.
Yes.
Would it be safe to say if it's, uh, too small, pick up with your fingers, it's okay to have to go down the drain? But if you scoop it up, throw it in the trash?
Yeah, that's true, because-
I mean, you're gonna have some, some off your ditches when you're caught.
You're gonna have some things that are gonna fall down the drain, and, and that's understandable. It, what we're saying is that you should make a conscious effort in cases where you can, to ensure that there's proper disposal. You know, the types of things that we were saying.
We put grease in cans.
And proper disposal does not include putting them down the sewer. And, and this is, Dick and Brian Johnson have put this together. You're basically working on a, a public campaign to inform the citizens of Mount Airy that, you know, just like the fats, oil, and grease, this is, this is something that's gonna be hitting the airwaves. Yes.
Well, Dick, thank you.
Yeah, it's very informative.
Thanks, Dick.
Is that your last half for the night?
That's it. I, I think I've got some questions for you, but later.
Okay, Mayor's not here, so, um-
I actually have.
You sent that to Mayor's report? Oh, you're gonna do Mayor's report, Bob? We have it. Were you gonna read it for him, or we're just gonna-
Well, you're just gonna say it's in front of us. Save time.
Would you, would you like me, would you like me to read it?
I want you to sing it.
Because I haven't read it at all.
Just do the highlights, because it's really long.
Neither, actually.
Uh, we just read it.
Um, Pat, Pat thinks it's very important that everybody be watching out. The kids are back in school now. It's getting dark in the mornings, it's dark in the evenings, so be aware. Um, public safety, as a reminder, the town has a ten PM curfew for those under the age of eighteen. It will be enforced by the Maryland State Police. Streetlights. If you notice a light out, please record a poll number and call Town Hall three oh one eight two nine one four two four and let them know the poll number. Um, the, the new basketball courts and tennis courts are ready for use at Watkins Park. They look absolutely wonderful. Door-to-door solicitation. There seems to be an increase in this. It's the time of the year where roofs and siding and, you know, they keep coming to your door. They are required in the Town of Mount Airy to have a peddler's permit.
And they will argue with you if you tell them that.
And they will argue with you, and according to the mayor, and I think Debbie, we've never sold one yet, a two-dollar permit, and we haven't sold one yet.
Now, I got chewed out by a peddler the other day. So did my neighbor. Well, uh, yeah, uh, we, we did, and there were no troopers available.
Right, if you, yeah. And that's if, you know, it says here, call the troopers.
They were in Westminster.
Call the troopers or email the mayor. Uh, Making Strides for Breast Cancer Walk. The third annual walk is on Sunday, October the twentieth, two thousand fourteen. Yeah, that should be October the nineteenth. Um, registration starts at nine, the walk starts at ten. It's a five K walk, starting and ending at Watkins Park. For those that can't do the entire walk, there's a shorter walk just around the walking path in Watkins Park, the Wilson Trail. The goal is to reach a hundred teams and a hundred thousand dollars this year in honor of the American Cancer Society's hundredth birthday. Sign up and start fundraising today. Mount Airy Gem. Through careful planning and limits, we have been able to maintain this great community we call home. Mount Airy Gem is a gem for many reasons. We are one of the few municipalities on a superior, superior groundwater system. We are close to several larger metropolitan hubs that have retained, and we have retained our small-town charm. We are also home to some very unique businesses. To get the word out, to support these businesses, I plan to feature them in this article. Okay, new, new businesses, Georgia's Girls Jewelry and Repair, right down here, uh, by Conchettis and-
Brian Johnson.
Um, speaking of gems, George, uh, 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 in honor of the late George Rue of Eagle Jewelers, who offered personalized jewelry services in Mount, in Mount Airy, and Mount Airy and area residents for over thirty-four years. Um, it's located in historic downtown Main Street, wide variety of their own gems. Laura and Ed Poles, the owners of Georgia's Girls, will offer Pandora, Whitney V, Leleana, Waxing Poetic, Lotus, John Michael Richardson, and other local artists' jewelries. Other services will include jewelry repair, washing battery replacement, watch band adjustment. You remember Linda Poles, who worked for George Rue for over sixteen years. Let's support our local businesses and give the personalized service you cannot find with larger retails. Georgia's Girls is at two thirty-three Mount South Main Street in the old firehouse building, and can be reached at three oh one eight two nine ten forty. Check out their Facebook page. The Mayor's October Community Forum will be held on October the eleventh, from ten to noon. This, this will be a special public safety forum. Residents are encouraged to stop by Town Hall and discuss any town-related topics. Town Council members, that's you guys, are also invited to attend. The setting is comfortable and informal. Grab a cup of coffee and stop by. Volunteer opportunities, visit the town website, www dot mountairymaryland dot org for a list of volunteer opportunities for one of our many commissions. We have two openings on our Water and Sewer Commission. Oh, good, I get to talk about this again. Commissions are made up of Mount Airy residents who study and advise the mayor and town council on all issues related to water cost structure, conservation, capacities, et cetera. Interested citizens can let me know by calling Town Hall or emailing me direct at patrockenberg, oh, P Rockenberg at gmail dot com. And that's the Mayor's report.
All right, EDC, Water and Sewer.
Okay, we'll go Water and Sewer first. Um, the average wastewater treatment plant flow for the month of September was point six one two million gallons a day. Um, Rick Blatchford and I are making plans to spend some time checking water pressure in most of the neighborhoods around town. I've received several emails from residents concerned about the perceived lower water pressure than they used to have. We're gonna call people and make appointments in the next couple of days, and Rick has the equipment to get around and check the water pressure.
Yeah, there are, um, pressure control valves inside of all the houses, and they fail. I mean, I've had to replace mine twice.
I just had mine done.
And I've replaced, I've replaced it myself twice in twenty years.
And that's what-
Most, they probably, you know, they get clogged, things happen to them, they fail, and people don't realize that, they need to just call a plumber. It's not, it's not our end.
Yeah, it's a, it's a pressure regulator, and it's right after your meter downstairs.
Actually, on mine, it's right before my meter.
Uh, Monica and Dick have attended meetings concerning the rain tags with Carroll County and Frederick County. We discussed the MOA earlier in this meeting. Uh, but today, we really don't have a good feel about how storm water management issues will be handled on the Frederick side of town. But we got two of the best working on it.
Actually, we met with Shannon Porter, who was Tom Deville's counterpart, and we had a meeting, and she basically couldn't really help us that much. Uh, Frederick, the municipalities aren't really doing much on that side, so we're gonna pursue communication with MDD to try to find out exactly what kind of permit we're gonna need on the Frederick side. Although Carroll, the Carroll County Administrative Office of Tom Deville, this is gonna help us with the administrative paperwork for our Frederick County projects. So, but we'll have to pony up the money for the projects on that side.
Now, I think that was one of the really good things about that MOA that we didn't talk about was that Carroll County is gonna handle all the administrative and the paperwork on that stuff.
They, they offered, graciously offered their services to help us, you know, manage our Frederick County projects, too.
Uh, the next meeting for Water and Sewer, we, Sewer will be on Wednesday, November tenth, Town Hall, I'm sorry, November fifth, Town Hall at seven o'clock. And if you'd like to serve, we have openings, me, Dick, Rick Blatchford, and, um-
Pretty good.
Right. So, you know, come play with us, we're having a great time. Economic Development Commission, uh, the newsletter, Mount Airy Tracks, will be going to the printer this Friday. In about two weeks, we'll be having a labeling party at Town Hall to, to stick it with the dress labels. If you need community service hours, this is a great opportunity to get them. Call Melissa Hoyle at Town Hall to get the details. The annual business card exchange in partnership with the Greater Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce will be happening on Wednesday, December the tenth, Town Hall, four thirty to six thirty. EDC is looking for vendors to provide support for the Mount Airy, Mount Airy smartphone app. It's, it's more than somebody can do keeping up with the thing. It seemed easy at first, and it's not. Uh, we're also looking into somebody to design a smart-friendly, smartphone-friendly town website to complement our current website. And the next EDC meeting is on Wednesday, October twenty-second, Town Hall, seven thirty PM. And that's my report.
All right, Beautification, Parks and Rec. I was out of town that week, so I was not at either of the October meets. Uh, the one thing Beautification wanted me to point out is the daffodil heritage product, which they're working on, which is, the plan is to gather, you know, local daffodils that are all different, uh, patterns. I don't like, even in my woods, if you go in my woods behind my house in the spring, there's like ten different kinds of daffodils that come up all over the yards. They're gathering those bulbs, and they're gonna plant them in the gardens around town. So these are like, you know, all different kinds of, of daffodils, some of which are ones that people have been planting in this town for generations. Because once you plant daffodils in your woods, they like, don't go away, they just like, keep growing. Uh, so they wanted me to point that out. Obviously, there's also the, um, the dinosaur project is underway at the schools, which is to have the kids name the two dinosaurs in Wildwood Park. Um, I don't know what the names will come out being, but give the kids a chance to name them. And I think the actual name options are, I think, eventually gonna appear at the council table, where the council will make the final choice. Uh, I think that's really about it for what they wanted me to point out. Over on the Parks and Rec side, um, you can now take the rail trail all the way from Watkins Park to Main Street. I did it the other day. You have to, you do have to kind of get around a dumpster there at the end that hasn't been moved yet, but the new fencing has been put in with, with the, with the pathway along the edge there, so you can now go all the way through. I actually did it on my bike. So, you can do it. So that's a, that's a real start, and thank you to all those many volunteers. I see the Bryans back there. I've, I've seen them put in many to, many hours out there.
What was his name, the Beast? Was he the Beast?
He comes along with this big tractor thing that he owns, with like a claw on it. You know, it's like, it's like those little kid games, you know, where you pick up the stuff and move it. He's got his own, really cool. But he gets, he gets a lot of work done, so the Rails to Trails project is coming along. Uh, Bob already mentioned that the, um, the tennis courts are done. Last time I checked, the, the court hadn't, didn't have the rims up yet. Is the basketball court or the, or the rim?
It's all done.
Okay, okay, last time I checked was a couple of days ago, so it wasn't up yet. But it, it looked beautiful, all the finishing was done when I last saw it, and they did a- For those of you who are wondering why this took so long, we didn't plan for it to take so long, this, however, was a, a first-rate job. I mean, they put water out there and looked for any little puddles, and then they go fill them in, so this is level. This is not just the old, you know, slap down some pavement, paint it, which we often did in the past. You're really playing on a good surface on, on both.
Yeah, they did an excellent job.
So they did an excellent job. We're sorry it took longer than it did. And on, um, so I've got on Parks. They will be meeting, Beautification will meet the third Tuesday in this room at seven, and Parks will meet the third Thursday in this room at seven thirty. And we will move on to P and Z and Test Force.
So, as we all know, planning, the Planning Commission has been up to their eyeballs in the master plan. We had that joint meeting last week with the council, probably one of the, the finer meetings I've ever seen occur in the town.
Very useful meeting.
Yeah, I, I mean, just a note to everyone again, um, a, a lot of folks, you know, as a volunteer, a lot of folks wanna try to make an impact. I just wanna emphasize that every member of the Planning Commission is a volunteer. Um, and those volunteers are the ones helping shape the future of the town, and they've done a fabulous job, so kudos to them. Um, that work is ongoing, and we've already discussed before. Um, also, Community Center Task Force, I was ill at night, so, um, they have met. I haven't been able to follow up with them yet, so, I don't have a report yet, but I'll get that next time. That's it, thank you.
Alright, let's talk some trash.
Alright, let's talk trash. Um, so we ended up having, um, the recycling sanitation meeting on seventeenth of September, um, discussed some numerous items that would be interesting, two town residents is conducting a battery drop-off in the spring, similar to the shredded event. Um, this would be for bigger batteries, uh, car batteries, tractor batteries, et cetera, that can be recycled. Um, we're looking, uh, for a commission, um, to determine for either getting bins, which would be like nine hundred dollars bin, or to see if we can fund it some other method. Um, there is revenue that can be generated out of it, depending on the size of the battery and the tonnage of batteries that are returned, so that's something we're looking at as a commission. Um, let's see what else. Um, uh, some of the members ended up taking a trip to the Elk Ridge Recycling Facility, um, to see how they do recycling. Um, the report that came back from it, I did not go myself, said that it was, uh, 'cause it was a day trip. Said it was very interesting, um, they actually take all the recycling and break it down into different components. The one component they cannot recycle is plastic bags, they pull that out. Um, those are actually thrown away, they also pull out any trash that ends up coming into the recycling, uh, determining if there's other non-recyclable items in there that isn't considered trash, whether it can be trashed, or if it has to be handled differently. Um, this would be anything like medications, et cetera. Um, so that was good. Their commission's also looking at researching, uh, CFL light bulbs. Um, there is an issue with CFL light bulbs that the public may not know, they contain, contain small amounts of mercury, so there's special handling that needs to be done. You can't just throw them in your recycling box of the trash, we really wanna handle those appropriately. So, uh, one of the commission members is actually doing some research, and we'll bring that back at our November meeting. Um, and then also, they were discussing our recycling toad replacement plan. Uh, Carroll County currently pays, um, or we pay for the recycling toads, but Frederick County actually provides them, so they wanna know, how do we get replacements back in and get a process in place for that when people need them?
Okay, so Carroll County said, we pay for the bins, and on the Frederick County side, Frederick County pays for the bins.
Yeah, they provide it.
Uh, Frederick County provides town residents that live in Frederick County.
Got, right, yeah, I know that across the side. I didn't realize we bought on the Carroll County side.
Yeah. So, their, their suggestion right now, and things to look at, is that maybe we have money put into the recycling sanitation budget going forward, so that when we need to purchase new toads, we can do so. Uh, and then the next meeting's gonna be November nineteenth at seven PM here in Town Hall, and that concludes my report.
You know, an interesting, I guess, recycling note that I've run into being here in Town Hall, like, a couple times, is people sometimes don't realize that your, um, recycling toter needs to stay at your house. First off, when you move it, it belongs with the house, but the other problem is, you need to be careful borrowing your neighbors, 'cause we've had cases where people borrowed their neighbors from across the street, and their neighbor across the street lived in the other county, and then they called the town, when Carroll County didn't pick up the Frederick toter that was on the other side of the street, or vice versa.
Well, the other, the other thing to note, they are.
So, keep your toter at your house.
The other thing to note is that the RF, uh, the toders are RFID chipped. Um, so, they do know what toders.
Are yours.
Should be where. Um, and I know that there's been some other minor things that we'll discuss, but, um, one of which is if people were working with a provider currently to ensure that your trash is picked up, your recycling and yard waste is picked up, um, but they do need help, um, with regards to placement of containers. Some people put them right next to their mailbox, other people are putting them on the side, some people are, you know, putting them in their driveway, whatever. So, we, we're kind of working on a method of, where can we put them so it's consistent, and people don't come home and find the bin laying in their driveway, uh, and they have to get out and actually move it.
Yeah, there is actually, on the Frederick County toders, there's actually instructions on how to place it. You're supposed to put it with, with, with the flap open towards, towards, towards the curb, and there's like an arrow on it telling you that it's supposed to be, 'cause they have a machine, I've watched them, it just comes and goes.
Have you ever seen it drink it backwards?
If you, no.
Drinking a cup from the wrong end?
Oh, is it, or it flips the wrong way? Yeah, so, so there are instructions on top of the toter for how to do it.
I always wanted to go to that recycling center too. Hey, you know, people used to come.
You could've gone, but you handed it over.
Nobody invited.
But you read off on the paper, the interesting thing, uh, the trash, what's left over, goes to China?
Yes, yeah, most of the.
Something like. All the goes to China, and then the one is, interesting factoid is that all of our aluminum goes to Anheuser-Busch.
Yeah.
Wonder why that.
For Keas. That's interesting.
And the bags, they say, like Walmart and the grocery stores recycle those bags, and they turn them into Trex, plastic lumber for your deck. So, they say that's, that's about the only recycling, and that is the biggest headache in recycling. If they could get bags out of the stream.
Or if they could figure out what to do with the bags.
Well, that's, there's, there's that, there's that too, they just, that they say.
Well, plastic goes to China, so, it's kinda hard for them to get it when it's coming over. But anyways.
Alright, great, uh, Streets and Roads.
They didn't have a meeting in, uh, September, next meeting is October, I think it's the thirtieth. You know, February thirtieth, you know?
Fourth Thursday.
Twenty-third or thirtieth? It's either twenty-third or the thirtieth, I'm not sure. Twenty-third, next meeting.
Yeah, twenty-third. Uh, wait a minute.
Twenty-third, yeah.
Alright, Monica?
Uh, the only thing I wanna mention is, we have a little bit of a fox problem at Wildwood Park. We've been having, um, a wildlife trapper go in there and take some foxes off the property. I kind of heard rumors that maybe somebody was feeding them, so they kinda flourished a little bit. So, we also, um, the residents contacted us, but they also contacted Animal Control in Carroll County, so they took a couple away from where the daycare center was, so please don't feed any wild animals. But if you have a problem, call us or call Animal Control in Carroll County, resigning, so we can get them taken away, 'cause they do pose a hazard for babies.
And you can get other problems. I remember, and I'm sure you remember, back when I was mayor, we had that one development where they're complaining about all the rats, and we sent the animal control people out, and the problem was that people were putting food out for stray cats. And it's like, you know, it doesn't, you know, the rats will, you know, if you wanna get rid of the cats, the rats, you have to stop putting the food out, because the rats will eat the food just as much as the cats will eat the food.
Right, so we're just.
And there's nothing we could do about it.
Right, so we're responding to requests or problems that, as we hear about them, but, you know, we've got the situation pretty under control right now.
Alright, Tom?
Uh, just over the la- since last meeting, mainly, uh, been working on master plan issues of various sort, uh, kinds, um, and also the MS four agreement that you had in front of you today.
Do we have a closed meeting after?
Yes, we, we have one scheduled, I'm looking to see if I have a closed meeting for them. Ah, Debbie's right on top of it. She knew that if she put it in my packet, I'd lose it. She kept it for me. Okay, first off, uh, is there any other business?
Um, pay bills?
Well, that's next.
Okay.
You moving that we pay bills?
Moving, we pay the bills.
I'll second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. I'm going to move that we go into a closed session to consider the acquisition of real property for the purpose of public matters directly related thereto, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice in a legal matter, to consult with staff consultants or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. Um, I moved it, do I have a second? Got Scott seconded. Uh, Health, aye. Phoebus?
Aye.
Everett?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Strong?
Aye.
Okay, we, uh, we'll go into closed session and we'll be adjourned, like, we don't have any reason to come back and open, so we'll be adjourned afterwards.
Are we taking a short?
Uh, yeah, we can take a minute.